Welcome back. We've taken a brief break and we are ready to resume with the agenda. And we are going to item nine B, which is a motion to adopt ordinance 2023 dash oh four, codifying all city departments. Chief Elmore, is this yours?
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, it is.
Oh, good.
He was the chair of the committee.
Okay, alright, alright.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
With this item, we are recommending the adoption of ordinance 2023 dash oh four, codifying all city departments. At a meeting in May, city council passed a notion, a motion authorizing city manager to develop an organizational restructuring plan to be considered after the budget's adoption. To accomplish this, the city manager formed various task forces comprised of several department directors. Task Force Two consists of Michael Hicks, who's the chair of the task force, Police Chief Connie Rogers, and myself, assisted by City Attorney Danielle Matticardi. The goal of this task force was to work with other departments to prepare their mission statements and to align, that that will align with the city's strategic plan and to the, and to adopt the ordinance that relates to all city departments. The city charter required city council to authorize the creation of city departments. The names of various departments have changed over the years and new departments have formed. However, such changes were never documented via ordinance or required a detailed review of all meeting minutes to find city council's authorizations. But to avoid such difficult searches in the future, Task Force Two determined that it will be the city's, in the, in the city's best interests to formalize its authorization to restructure and rename certain city departments by codifying a list of all departments in the city code of ordinance. And on page in your packet, on page fifty-eight is the organizational chart. On pages fifty-nine and sixty-one is the mission statement. And on page sixty-two starts the ordinance 2023 dash oh four.
Questions for Chief Elmore? Councilmember Clay?
Uh, yes, I, I had sent a note over, uh, I guess it was the weekend, everything gets merged together. And I suggested, I, first off, I think the, I think you guys have done a tremendous job. I used to have to do reorganizations almost every year because of the mix of things coming into the R and D organization in my first career. So I've had a lot of experience reorganizing. And I think this is what you needed to do. I think you guys have done a great job from what I can see. The only thing I had, the concern that I had was the fact that the, uh, the descriptions for the different areas, the mission statements. We didn't have one for the court system. And we didn't have one for Brecka Carter's Airport Affairs. And, and, and the city manager explained that. And you want to jump in, Stanley, and, and, and comment?
Yes, um, so Airporting Government Affairs and Municipal Court. I certainly didn't disagree with Councilman Clay's point that he gave to me over, over the weekend. Municipal Court, of course, is coming back to you because of the charter change that is required. And then I explained to him Airporting Government Affairs is considered a division of the city manager's office. We share staff as a one-person office at this point. She's actually housed. But I didn't disagree with the importance of having mission statements for both of those, both of which have been developed over the course of the weekend.
So that was, that was my only comment. And I think we have those, and I presume, I did have an opportunity to review the judge's mission statement. I thought it was right on target. I didn't have time. I had, I had surprise out-of-town visitors today, the worst possible time. And so I didn't really have a chance, I skimmed it, but I didn't have a chance to comment. But I, I'd leave it to you guys to come up with the mission statements. That's, that's really your job, not mine. But I did look at the, the judges and I thought it was right on target from where I sat anyhow. So I'm good. I think it's, it was the right thing to do. I'm so happy that you guys did it. In my opinion, it just demonstrates how professional this city organization is becoming. So I'm a happy candidate.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carron?
Uh, city manager, I think this is a good job. I see what you're trying to do here. And we wanted some reorganization, some consolidation, and some reshuffling of things. And the mission statements, I mean, they're fine and well and good, and that's great. I'm, I'm, you know, that, that's, that's good. I, I see one thing that's missing in a sense. While at the same time, it's integrated, but, but, but it, but it's kind of glaring. Over the years, you know, if you look at this whole thing in terms of city services from the, from the resident standpoint, there's one missing piece that I think we as a city, and particularly a hospitality city, but a, just a, a, a pocket neighborhood, community city as well. We never actually had a comprehensive and complete customer service, community outreach person, department person. Now, we've got bits and pieces of that throughout the various departments and divisions here. We do have that. But from the resident standpoint over the years, and I've had probably more of a turnstile operation than any other council member based on the makeup of my co, my community. The questions I get, they're so, they're varied in terms of general customer service, general community outreach. A person moving into this city would have to go to six or seven different department heads and find their way through to get some of their answers to some of the things that they need. Let's give you an example of some of the questions I've gotten just over the last couple of years. Because I, I always get new, I'm always getting new in. Hey, well, I, I need rental assistance. Hey, where can I, where can I find that exactly? Now, we have, I thought we had someone that was kind of a community outreach since in a piece. We've got some community outreach in policing. We've got some in economic development. We've got some over here, we've got some over there. But those questions, there's no one place they can go to to get those answers. Which park has facilities for dogs? Uh, you know, what are the city bus schedules? I'm having a family reunion, give, give me some, give me some venue choices. How many EV chargers do you have? And where's the nearest one? Who's your city's cable provider? Is there a discount rate for golfers in College Park? How do I do business with the city of College Park? I've got surplus junk in the basement I need to throw out. What should I do? You know, you know, where can I get some ID? Identification is a very overlooked issue in College Park. Because we're seventy-five percent rental, we have a very, very transient population. And to a lot of us, us in general, you know, ID's not a problem. I mean, you know, but when you think about it, it's a very, very serious problem that we don't connect to a lot of the services and things that we need to do. Of maj, uh, 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 I would say about half of our citizens don't have ID in the city of College Park because of our transient nature. And it's something to think about in terms of dealing with courts. It's something to think about in terms of dealing with elections, keeping a voter roll. It's something to deal, to think about just in, in, in quality of life in general as well. Now, you know, a customer service person could route people to all of these services that a lot of times we may overlook, but they're crucial services because of our transient population that would make life a little easier for them if we could say, hey, you could go to this website, Secretary of State's website, you can get state ID. If you don't drive, you can get this kind of ID. If you just want to vote, you can get a free voter ID. And, you know, so, so there are all kinds of opportunities and questions and things that come up that I want to say kind of fall through the cracks. You, you, you follow what I mean? And again, we got bits and pieces of it, but the type of city that we are, you, you, you follow one of, what I'm saying? So I, I want you to see, and it doesn't need to be necessarily a department head. But, but we, we, we need one, we need a one-stop somewhere where they don't have to call seven different offices and try to track down some of this stuff. But those are just some examples of some of the common stuff that I get around that, that I have, you know, I can answer some of it. But there's no way they can come in here and, and get that squared away. It'd take, I mean, come on, let's be real. It'd take a couple of weeks to get all that information to somebody possibly, you know, depending on specifically what they're asking for. So just something to think about.
Mayor, may I comment?
So, yeah.
Yes, Jonathan, please go ahead.
Councilman Carron, I, I follow you completely, and I agree. It always comes down to resources. In a previous organization, a one-stop shop for communications, whatever the question might be, we called it Neighbor Affairs. And of course, that office had to work with all of the other departments. But for our neighbors, they knew that they could call that one number. Obviously, we don't have it now. But the concept that's found within this codification is probably most closely found in what is now called City Clerk's Office and Public Affairs. And we've got communications, strategic communications as a part of that. At every meeting, we should be hearing and listening to ideas. We can listen to ideas that comes from individual councilors. We're not going to do unless there's a majority of the, of the council. But this is where I want staff, in this case, Ms. Ames, hearing. And then we'll talk about it because we need it for the good of our, for the good of our neighbors. But that public affairs is intended to get there. We're not there yet. But we've got some resources, including a vacant position that Ms. Ames is looking at of exactly how we're going to configure things. But I, I agree with your assessment.
What'd you call that again? What'd you say?
City Clerk's Office and Public Affairs.
Oh, you said, I heard neighborhood, neighbor, yeah.
Yeah, that particular office in that organization was called Neighbor Affairs.
I like this. Now, that, that, you know, you, you, you turning in my driveway now. That sound, that sounded pretty good. And, and we've, we've got, and we've got it in aggregate. But, but we need it kind of to, yeah, yeah. So let's, let's work on something along those lines, you know? But yeah, this is, this is, this is good progress. So we, we, I think we're getting there.
Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think this is very, very good. Thank you for, for all your work, Chief. I appreciate it, and your, and your whole team. I do like the, the neighbor's idea. I think that's good. You know, maybe you could use an intern or someone like that that knows how to, knows all of the youth and the systems and how to, how to get in touch with everybody. It's full of energy and so forth. I don't know how long you have to keep them or if it's worthwhile to train and then retrain and retrain. But, you know, that's a possibility, but I think that's a good idea. But this is, this is good, and I like it a bit, so thanks.
Councilmember Gay?
I, I think it's, um, a good report. I mean, there, I mean, personally, it's not a lot of changes, but I think we need to go a little bit slower when we talk, talking about reorganizing the organization. For example, I don't think, this is my opinion, I don't think our business license need to be taken out of a city clerk office and put under building. I understand enforcement of it, but that's, that's, same token, I don't understand how strategic communications is a function of the city clerk. I mean, there, we had Gerald Walker here for fifteen years as our public works director. And under him, I mean, communication is, is as, as comprehensive as it can be. And in today's world, I mean, it's almost like communication ranks top. Communication bring billions of dollars to organizations. So I don't want to ever not take communication. Not, not that it can't function under the city office clerk, I just think it has its own. So that being said, I just had a question. Where does strategic communication go? What happened to it? Where does it go?
Yes, on the organizational chart, it's, it's still an office, but it's an office that falls under City Clerk's Office and Public Affairs. So the Public Affairs title is largely attributable to moving that office under, under a larger department.
Well, you, you calling the plays, we gonna run it, so, thank you. Congratulations. I'm gonna make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion to accept this order.
Alright, thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second it with comment.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Go right ahead.
The one thing I, I didn't add when I was commenting, this is basically a one-dimensional functional structure. Not, not pure. I mean, there are some, Convention Center, for example, is, is kind of a hybrid. But, um, what Councilman Carron was talking about and what city manager was talking about is the second dimension. And it's a matrix organization that becomes a matrix organization. Going forward, as you recognize the, which I say, the, the attribute that you want to cut across organizations, for example, Councilman Carron was talking about, a common place for citizens to go to get various things done. Well, that cuts across some of the different functional areas. We used to have need to do that for project management. So we would have multiple projects going on that cut across functional areas. And that, that was happening all the time. So different organizations have different needs. But going forward, what I, I think city manager's going to do is, is he's going to gravitate gradually toward a functional, I mean, a matrix-type organization that will provide at least one other dimension and perhaps two. For example, project management. There is an opportunity for project management on a temporary basis for different projects. And you could put all those people, as I did, under one director, and they manage various projects. But in some cases, the projects were so small, we just took the functional organization director and let him be the project manager for a project that might require a little help from some other organizations, but didn't justify having a full project manager in a, in a project management organization. That's just an example. But, uh, what you guys have done now is to recognize that. For example, quality assurance. We don't have a quality assurance group. That's one of, been one of my complaint over the years. You're, you, you've sort of gotten some ad hoc quality assurance going on. But you could have a director of quality assurance that does nothing but quality assurance, process improvement, et cetera, et cetera. I had to do that in my organization. It was a technical organization, but there's no reason why it can't be done in this, this structure. So there's a whole nother, you know, we talk about the fourth dimension and time travel and what have you. Well, conceptually, it's a whole nother dimension that until you start thinking about it, you, you don't realize the power that is there if you implement something like that. And I think from, I remember in, in our interviews, when we were interviewing candidates for city manager, that's something I saw in Stanley that I thought, City Manager Hawthorne, excuse me, that I thought, yep, that's gonna, that's gonna happen.
It's coming.
And so I encourage you, I encourage city manager to start thinking about the other dimension or dimensions where you can cut across the organization. And maybe you will have a director, or you'll have a director that has managers under it. And the managers will manage these different dimensions. But I, I, excuse me for going into professorial mode, whatever. But, uh, that, that makes a huge, huge improvement in your organization. That's all.
Councilmember Carron?
That's all I had.
Councilmember Allen?
I just had a couple of things. I just, I've been involved with org charts for a long time. And, and one thing I learned is just about the time you get them settled, there's changes. So just be aware that there's gonna be constantly changes. And, and one department will change in another. The parks, I think we kind of need to, to look at. I, I, Councilman Carron, we, we can, we can make those mesh somehow. But that's the only comments I, I have.
Councilmember Gay?
Uh, I'm not feeling left out, but I want you to know that I never get complimented. It's always, well, Councilman Carron, but that's fine. But I do want to say one thing that may not be related to this order. You're getting a lot of accolades, but I want to say this to you, it was very profound. Don't be too cynical about love because it's as perennial as grass around here. So in other words, you know, take it all in stride, but, um, my point would be.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. DeMar?
I believe the motion was to approve the org chart, but it should be to approve the ordinance.
The ordinance is the org chart?
No, sir.
No, it is attached. It starts on page, packet page sixty-seven. Councilmember Gay, would you care to amend your motion?
Uh, city manager, how should I amend it?
It should be to approve the, to approve the ordinance in this org chart. It's just an exhibit or an attachment to the ordinance. So it should be to approve the ordinance.
I'd like to amend the motion to approve the ordinance.
Does the second still stand?
I'll second.
Who, who made the second?
Ambrose made the second.
Council, Councilmember Clay is your second.
Uh, yeah, I'll second, okay.
Alright, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. Uh, item nine C, it's a motion to, thank you, Chief. It's a motion to approve the Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services Grant in the amount of three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. Uh, good evening, Deputy Chief, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Question for you, it's, it's before we, before I open it up to the council in regard to the actual spending of this grant. It's, it's my understanding that your department already has lined up the vendors for this. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And that went through purchasing?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you please make sure your, your phone is on silent? Thank you. Mr. Hawthorne? Is there an opportunity for us to, to, to somehow expedite this so they don't have to come back around? If we're saying they can spend three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars that they've been waiting for? And, and they've already lined it up through purchasing? If we get that information to, to not have sort of a double, a double dip on this, that, that we just get the process moving so we can get the equipment in and, and get the police officers what they need?
Well, I'm all for efficiency, Mayor. I'm looking for something more specific than that.
As far as purchasing, we sent it through. They have received the sole source information so that we can move forward if it's approved.
We'll, we'll start with, we'll start with questions from the council and see if, see if they're amenable to that. Alright, um, Councilmember Clay?
Yeah, I, if, if we know roughly what, what you're approving, you, you have in a list of things you're gonna buy with this, right?
Yes, sir. It's to enhance and advance the technology, like, for example, fuses, niben, freedom application, and the mobile surveillance support.
Yeah, so, I, I don't have a problem with, uh, if we know what we're going to spend it on, how, unfortunately, we don't have a document here that says that, does it? Is it laid out?
Yes, these were the items that were itemized and laid out in the grant process.
So, so since this is, uh, total, no cost to the city, and we've got the items laid out.
Right.
Why can't we approve both the purchase of those items as well as the acceptance of the grant at the same time? I think that's what the mayor is saying, and I don't have a problem with that. And I would suggest that we make that motion in that fashion.
We would greatly appreciate it.
No, sir, a motion has not been made yet.
Well, what, what?
Well, hold on a second, let me.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that if you're, you know, if we haven't got there through twelve, third twenty-four, is that what?
I'm sorry?
The project, uh, budget period ends on twelve twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, yeah, I got it.
Alright, and we'll pick up, uh, discussion, Councilman Carron.
First of all, we're glad to get this, obviously. We're happy to take any grants. This isn't, there's no match on this, right?
It's a reimbursement.
It's a reimbursement?
Yes, sir.
So we've already, we, we, that's how we went through purchasing and the procurement process and the whole nine?
Right.
I'm not against fast-tracking things to get things moving. But in my packet, I just can't find the itemized list of the items that total up to the, how much is it, three hundred?
Seventy-three, three hundred seventy-three thousand.
Unless I didn't see that, I do see a list here. But, uh, the only thing it says is equipment. Now, I mean, you, you know, unless I'm, unless, unless.
You're, you're right.
You know, I, I mean, now, I support you getting whatever you need over there. But, you know, you, you, you can't be serious and think I'm gonna approve three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars if it just says equipment. No, and I'm, I'm not gonna approve that for anybody.
Well, she says she has a list. It's just a matter of getting.
It's the same things that were itemized in the initial grant.
All that's fine, well and good, but none of us know what any of those items are. We need an itemized list if we're gonna spend a third, over a third of a million dollars here. And I'm glad we got it, but.
I can provide a copy to the city manager tonight.
I mean, does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Well, city manager's not spending it and authorizing it. We are. So it'd be good to, when you get that kind of amount of money here, you need to lay it out for us so we'll know what it is we're approving. I can't, I can't make a blind approval for something. I don't know what we're spending. It says three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars equipment. And I'm sure it's great equipment, and I'm sure it's appropriate equipment. But I don't know what it is. Now, the mayor's fine with going ahead and moving forward. Maybe she knows what it is. Maybe she has the list. I don't have the list. Does any, I mean. I don't have the list. There's any, I mean, unless someone, you know, unless I'm the only one that did not get the list. But I'm fine with it, and I'm sure once we go through the list and see how it totals up and what we're gonna be getting, what the items are, everybody's gonna be fine with it.
Council, I, I apologize that you did not get the list. This is information that was part of the omnibus bill request that the entire city was involved in. And this is just the portion that we had. And if you recall, uh, John Ossoff came in reference to the fuses.
The ballistics.
Right, and that's what this is about.
Okay, well, well, again, if, if, if I was, but is I the only one that didn't get it?
It was the city, entire city project.
Was I the only councilmember that didn't get it? Because you apologized for me not getting the list.
Well, I apologize for anybody who didn't get it, so I, I don't know if you did or not.
I just didn't see it in here. And I said to myself, well, it, is it that? Or is it, because it sounded like there was a list of specific items. And I know the ballistics thing isn't one big, one big entity. I mean, so it's a lot of stuff. I just wanted to see the breakdown of the stuff. That's all. So, okay, I mean, I, I mean, I, I.
But again, it's, it's fuses, the ballistic, uh, event, um, the freedom application, and then, uh, a portion of money to help support purchasing the mobile camera.
And I'm okay with it. I mean, just, you know, you, you, you bring us that number and, and it says equipment. Bring us the itemized list just so we can, you know, cross the Ts and dot the Is and make sure that we know what we're approving specifically. So, yeah, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. Can you just give, 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 send me that information and I'm, and, you know, assuming the city manager's taking a look at this stuff and we, 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 now that you, you, you know, I, I, I get it. I just would like to see a itemized list totaling that amount.
Yes, sir.
So we'll know what it is, so.
Councilmember Allen? Councilmember Gay?
Uh, I have a question and a comment. Could we approve it contingent on seeing the list? I'm asking.
Yes, sir. That's a possibility.
Well, that'll be a motion in a minute, but my second question is, city manager, uh, I think I read in my office earlier that twenty thousand of this goes to that mobile camera? But then you got that in the budget amendment, budget amendment?
Well, this is for the support of it.
What does that mean?
So you will still have maintenance and other fees and prices that will come with it?
Oh. So I can make a motion that, uh?
Councilmember, there's already a pending motion?
Did I just make it?
No, sir. Councilmember Clay made the motion.
Without the list?
It, it was, it was, uh, not inclusive of having the list, but if we, if councilmember Clay wants to amend his motion.
I'm, I'm fine with amending the motion. So, uh, contingent on us, or approve it with the understanding that we get the list.
Second.
It's already, well, hold on. Councilmember Allen, are you?
I'll second that one.
Yeah, because he made the original second, so if his. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's unanimous. Item nine D is a resolution, a motion to approve resolution number sixteen for the City of College Park, application for CDBG three-year funding grant applications for park and facility improvements. Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, mayor and council. So this is a grant, um, three-year funding grant that goes along with the cooperative agreement that we did with Fulton County, um, for the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant. Um, and it is the continuation of improving the park playgrounds to include Phillips Park and Zup Park. Um, and that breakdown, I think, is three nineteen per year is what we asked for, for the three years, starting in twenty twenty-four. So twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six, for a total amount of nine fifty, fifty-seven.
Councilmember Clay?
I, I just moved to approve.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
A second with discussion.
Councilmember Carron, go right ahead.
Uh, obviously, we're glad to get it. So the majority of this is gonna go towards Phillips Park? Is that basically it?
So this is the application.
Oh, this is the application?
So, um, CDBG in the past would ask for a resolution after we've been awarded, which is what has been happened in the past. But they want us all on the same page of what we're applying for with the application so that they can roll with it for the three years.
And the, the Barrett Park, that was in twenty-one, part of that CDBG. But that, that wasn't the total amount of CDBG then, was it? The hundred and two?
Correct, it was. It was a hundred and two. It was not a typical, I think, one sixty-two is what we've been getting in the past. So it was less at that time. So the, the, the plan is to work Phillips Park, Zup Park, um, playgrounds to complete overhauling all the parks for the City of College Park.
All right.
Councilmember Allen? Councilmember Gay?
Two questions. Where, if we were to be awarded the money, does the playground, is that the first priority?
For Phillips Park is the first priority.
And the second question is, with playground costing upwards to one and a half million, is that why there's other monies allocated in the budget amendment to get a total package?
Correct. Um, when I looked into for the cost for Phillips Parks, it's almost about three separate. And same thing with Zup. They're, they're bigger playground equipment. So, um, for the quotes for the equipment itself was about five hundred thousand. But then we're looking at removing that equipment and adding borders, mulch, and whatever else would need to finish that.
So this would be in twenty twenty-four that would be awarded the CDBG grant?
That's when we, we would be awarded for, and this is just what we asked for. It's not necessarily what we will receive.
Can we get started on some items in the playground? Should its body approve of, since he recommend some priorities in the? Because, you know, for the record, granted, we appreciate the splash pad and the basketball court. But the playset is for smaller kids, and it's not been improved since probably around ninety, ninety-four. It's a long time for playground.
So, um, we would try to do that within conjunction if, if, depending on the approval for the, um, um, budget modification. So that should complete that playground.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous.
So, Michelle, so this amount won't complete the playground therein by itself? It has to have additional funds?
Correct. Or we'd have to go to a smaller playground.
Okay, and this is gonna be phased in over the ye, over these years, from twenty-four to twenty-six, looks like?
Correct, so we could do Phillips Park in a phase scenario with twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six, twenty-five.
Is there an estimate for the twenty twenty-four? Is there an estimated amount?
For the amount that, for award for the CDBG?
For that year, is, is, is it?
Yes, three, three eighteen.
That's the three nineteen?
Yeah, three nineteen, so it's.
Okay, so it's an even amount for every year?
Which is what we asked, you know, just, that's what we asked for. Now, they may have more, they may have less, just depending on the amount of money that had, um, awards.
So, so you, so you put three nineteen in next year, and then you, you do another apparatus? Is that, is that how it works?
I'm, I'm hoping that we wouldn't have to phase, but if we have to, that would be what we would do.
All right, okay, I was just curious.
Okay, thank you.
Item nine E is a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five, authorizing the executive director of the Georgia International Convention Center to execute certain contracts. Good evening, Ms. Patrick. How are you?
I'm good. I'm the mayor and council. Um, so Mercedes is not present, so I am presenting this issue, or never mind. Hi, Mercedes. Um, so this is one that I worked in conjunction with Mercedes on. Um, as you know, generally, contracts are only signed by the city manager. And as it comes to GICC, there are oftentimes where Mercedes, as the executive director, has to execute certain rental agreements and things that need to be done in a more immediate fashion than just two council meetings a month. Um, so this amends, uh, creates, it drafts, I drafted an ordinance so that section, just pulling it up, section two four, which was existently just a reserved section. Um, and this would allow the executive director of the GICC to execute any rental agreements. And it's not just limited to the GICC. It's also the golf course and for the arena.
Councilmember Clay?
I, I have no problem. I realize there are situations where you need quick turnaround to get this done. And it's a limited, very limited authority to rental agreements. So, um, I'm good with it. In fact, I'll, I'd even make the motion to approve it.
Thank you, sir. Sir, second.
Second.
Thank you, councilmember Allen. Councilmember Carron?
Uh, yeah, uh, I guess obviously the city manager's gonna be notified about it, though, right?
Correct, yes. I mean, it, they're all.
He's saying yes, Mercedes is saying no.
Well, not before it's done. Um, but, so it's all, they're all city contracts, so they're, they will be in city records. Um, I'm not sure if the city manager wants to be notified every single time Mercedes executes one of these agreements or not.
When a contract is executed, we keep a file and a copy of it, but it's usually on the month-end documents that we send in to, um, to the city manager as well as the mayor and council. But there's no way I could send him a contract every time I, we signed it. He would, he'd probably get rid of me.
Oh, and, and, and I did not mean a contract, no, just a email, hey, ten going out the door.
No.
She calls me regularly.
I call him regularly.
Just note, note, uh, notification, just, just where, you know, obviously, I guess finance is gonna know sooner or later. Not even later.
No, well, once we get a contract, a contract is not definite until the, the, um, the client pays fifty percent. Once they pay their fifty percent, it's definite, and then all their other fees are due thirty days before their event. So, uh, Althea will already know when they're going in the system because our council works with her. She puts it in the same system you all use.
I got it, and I understand. I mean, I looked at this and, I mean, you got a different animal over there, so I understood, and you know what you're doing, so, all right.
Councilmember Allen?
No, I don't have any questions. You gotta do the interview. You lose them, so.
Councilmember Gay?
Well, actually, I, I'd like to remind this body how we got to this point. So there was a, uh, war, four citywide festival a couple of years ago during COVID, when festivals was outside. And I contracted with a producer to bring Cisco. And when they put the ticket sales, certain members on this body stopped it and said that no one person can buy the city. And I pointed out that we've been buying the city through GICC contracts and other contracts. And then we was told, well, that's a precedent. So I just always wanna remind people how we got to this space. So I'd like to take some credit for you being able to sign contracts. And I still wanna see Cisco.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's unanimous. Nine F is a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of College Park and Fulton County for the transfer of point eight acres of land for a tiny home development.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you, councilman Gay, and the second by councilman Clay. Discussion, councilman Clay?
Yes, I seconded it with, with, uh, with comment, discussion, whatever.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, um, I had two issues with, with the contract, uh, that are minor. Uh, packet page eleven, one eleven, I'm sorry. Uh, under signage, it, it talks about the one ninety-three bus stops at Elm and Adams along Willingham.
This is the IGA. Um, that question was pertaining to the, um, item nine G. But this was regard to the, uh, tiny homes IGA.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I can't quite understand.
Sorry. The question you had related to Route one ninety-three, that was in relation to item nine G with, um, Marta property. The one we're discussing is nine F.
So is, is it, is one ninety-three a bus route?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it was a minor point. It's just that I would have thought it would say the Route one ninety-three bus.
Councilmember Clay, I, I've got to interject. That's out of order because we're not discussing that issue right now. We're discussing, we're discussing the intergovernmental agreement between College Park and Fulton County for the development of tiny homes.
Okay. And I'm, then I'm, hold on a minute. I have one more in here, but that's also in the IGA, so forget it. I pass.
So no questions on, on this item?
That's it.
Nothing on tiny homes? On tiny homes. That's where, that's where we are.
I thought we were on the bus.
We, we are not, sir. It is on, on tiny homes.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Uh, that's a whole different ballgame. I have a lot of issues with the tiny homes. But what packet page is that on, mayor? For some reason, I'm. One oh four?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, well, I'm not sure how we ended up there, but.
I think you made a motion.
Yeah, but I thought I would, I beg your pardon. I thought I was making a motion on, on the IGA. My packet page one oh four is, uh, item nine F. Internet, intergovernmental agreement between the City of College Park and Fulton County for the transfer of, oh, I beg your pardon. Okay, yes, I have problems with that. Um, and I gave them on, to Tasha.
Yes, sir.
On a separate document that we got. Right, right, right. Now, it's just, it's, uh, it's coming back. Let me get over here and pull up, uh, the tiny home agreement. Yeah, that came, what was it? That came Sunday or?
Um, Friday afternoon.
Okay, so I know you gave me a, an email today. I had out-of-town company unexpectedly. I did not have a chance to review everything. But my first question is on, uh, page four of twenty. And it talks about the lottery.
Yes, sir.
And this isn't a, a, a showstopper, but it talks about the pool for the lottery, maybe most, I, I was saying the pool for the lottery could be huge. Uh, yes, we get first crack at it. Our citizens will get the first opportunity, maybe ain't aware of it, which I greatly appreciate. But if you leave the window open long enough, it could take up the whole Atlanta area.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, my motivation in, in, in emphasizing earlier that College Park citizens ought to have a first crack at it was geared toward getting a lot of these homes being taken over by people that already were in College Park and maybe homeless or living in a rental, poor rental situation or something.
Yes, sir.
So, um, I'm not gonna say don't do it for that reason, but hopefully the lottery won't be kept open so long that College Park entrance only make up one percent of it or something.
Yes, sir. And I, may I provide the, um, information that I provided via email since you're unable to, um, to view or to be able to provide it to the body?
And what did it say?
So, um, I did see your concern regarding the lottery. Um, I do have, as far as Will Johnston of Micro Life Institute is in attendance, as well as our attorney Danielle, who assisted with the draft of this IGA. Um, one of the contingencies that we placed on the document was under the project oversight and compliance, which is listed on page four under item C. We did require for a member of the College Park team or a representative to be on the project management team. Um, that was done in the desire that that representative would be able to provide communication with internal, um, and local stakeholders so that we can ensure that College Park residents are being first informed of this as well as that we are using our resources to be able to, um, market to our residents and educate. But then also, if there's any issues that come about, that we have a member on the team to assist.
Yeah, I, I, okay, and I appreciate that, and you know me, I'm detailed and paranoid. But I just, that's a, that's a potential issue. Um, I'm, I'm not, like I said, it's not a showstopper. On packet page six, though. On packet page six, though, I, I still have a problem with that. The way I read this, there's a stipulation in there that basically says that commencement of construction will be considered to have occurred when, um, the plumbing is in on the ground and the land has been cleared. And that has to be done in a certain period, I think it was eighteen months, something like that. My concern is, I don't want a pipe farm there. I know it's not my ward, but I still don't want a pipe farm there. And, uh, I live with a pipe farm where, uh, the, the links are for years, I, I had hunted, tried to hunt down developers, uh, working with various people. Oxford Walk had a similar problem. And what I worry about is, I don't see enough money in this grant that this is being worked off of to get the whole thing done, plain and simple. And so, I worry about it getting to the point where we have a pipe farm, and then the question is, we're out of money. So, where does the rest of the money come from? Or does it come, or does it take five years to come? Then you get into the issue, uh, things like, uh, if the property sits for, for three years, then anyone can buy it to use for anything. That's another concern I have in the way it's, in the way it's worded. I may have misinterpreted some of those details, but I, I've read it several different times, and I, I just don't see how this is going to work. We also have issues with the, uh, geography of the property, as to how many homes we can build and, and whether it's in a floodplain and so forth. And it, it just bothers me that we we have a project that it seems like several things can go wrong. And I don't know what we're gonna do if they go wrong, and, uh-
I do wanna address, cause I did see the concerns listed within the email, and one of those was initially when, um, mayor and council got the first review of the pro, of this, uh, document, the IGA, not this specific one, but the last one you were able to view, is that it did not specify what installed utilities were defined as. So, within this document, we did define them as electrical, water, sewer, as well as grading. Um, with the, I guess, the, um, concern regarding the potential reconveyance, another, um, item that we, uh, added into this document that is before you is that not only would the city have the first right of refusal if there were to be another property or project manager, but first, we have the first right of reconveyance. So, if something were to occur, um, in this document, as well as it does say that if it is not Micro Life Institute, that we have the ability to assist in selecting the project manager. If we come and we say, okay, we wanna move forward, we have the ability to reconvey the project, if the city chooses not to reconvey of the project, then we have the first right to refuse who the next person would be involved with the project, and we did this in the mind, um, state of we would like to prepare for the worst that could occur. I would like to say that I don't think that any of us would like to see this to be, um, pipe farm, especially in this location. But if we are in control, which we are, of the ordinances, they have stated per this document that they will follow the city ordinances as well as our building codes, this would be going through our inspections department, so we are providing inspections up until the state of them receiving their certificate of completion. So, if something were to be incorrect, it would be in turn on the city, um, as we are really bearing, um, a lot of those responsibilities. I would just, that would be kind of the thing that we add in, is just that we've tried to think of the worst case possible and try to set the city up for the best case and the worst case.
Yeah, I, and, and I apologize, I'm, I'm really not trying to give you guys a hard time, and I, I think what we're trying to do, what the county's trying to do, what, what we'd all like to do, is absolutely great. I, I just don't feel real comfortable with the feasibility. Now, we can roll the dice on it, you know, I, 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 I'm not against rolling the dice because I think it's such a good project. But I have a lot of concerns.
Yes, sir.
And I, I will totally agree that the changes you make moves us along the spectrum of making things more comfortable. So, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to vote against it, uh, at this point, uh, but I sure ain't gonna make the motion for it.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to add as well, there was a suggestion that was incorporated as well, made by, um, it, city engineer Dean due to the, uh, floodplain management, as far as, um, he did add that, and Danielle did add that language in. So, we, um, as well as Micro Life Institute is aware of the potential, um, for the flood involvement for the property. So, um, we have, I think, really circled up as a team to, um, to try to bring this, the best, the best project forward for you all.
I, I hope it works out, Tasha, I, I just-
I understand.
You know me.
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to be careful. Go ahead, Joe.
Councilmember Carr?
Alright, well, let's make sure it works out. So, the contract falls under our code, right?
Yes.
Who spearheaded this, this contract work on our side? Any one person specifically?
So, once I got involved, I began working with the city attorney's office as well as city planner Angela Rambo while she was here.
So, you spearheaded getting this together, I mean, you're economic development?
Once I got involved into this project, so once I came before you, that's when I started working on this.
Alright, so what's the time estimate between, uh, the water, sewer, infrastructure, the plumbing stubs coming out and, and vertical construction?
Um, that is, as far as the timeframe is something we would like to discuss further, we do need to meet with project management, um, along with Fulton County as well as for myself and Will, so that we can provide a definite timeline for you all. This item would still need to go before the board of the development authority, so we cannot say when it would begin until we receive their approval as well.
Well, I understand commencement, I'm not, that's not what I'm talking about, but Will is project management, right? Is Will project management?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, then you all have been talking every week, I would imagine, in getting that together, right? So, we know how many homes we can build? I'm assuming we know that by now, right?
No, sir.
It's been four months.
We're, we're, I have not been involved with this for four months, I have been involved as you've seen me involved. We're in the process of Micro Life doing their, um, research and finding out the information.
Okay, so Will, alright, well, you've got an estimate on how many homes you can build at this point, right?
I do not, because I have been told not to start anything until this IGA is, uh, executed. And, and once that, this is executed and we go in front of the development authority, that is appro, not development authorities, is development authority, um, then I have all my contracts lined up for my architect and development. I know the number I want to hit, but again, we need to take into the floodplain and really understand the land and the survey and also the FCE, FCE environmental has been completed, so that is really great for us to be at this position. But like, once this is approved, or hopefully approved, and we go through the development authority, um, basically it's go time.
Alright, okay, well, let's just get this thing done, um, if you need any push on the Fulton County end, let me know if I can help.
Thank you, sir.
We want it to be a successful project, but, uh, let's get going, and you were told not to do anything by who?
Fulton County, working with them, they're my direct report.
Well, we've been hoping to get this IGA done a couple of meetings ago, and I thought everyone had put in the changes and corrections that they needed. But, uh, apparently not the case again, is that right, Tasha?
I'm bringing you all the best document at this point, receiving the, uh, comments from mayor and council.
Alright.
Councilmember Allen?
So, let me make sure, I, there's a lot of things I don't understand. So, Fulton County is gonna get a million dollars that they're gonna spend on this.
Correct.
And when that million dollars runs out, if you've got one house on there, what happens? I mean, when you do the, it says here that you've got, uh, you agree to your application, uh, for the land disturbance, you've got one year to do that. And then after you get the land disturbance, uh, you've got eighteen months before you finish breaking ground. So, we got two and a half years where nothing's done but the ground-
That timeline was, uh, addressed by lawyers, and, and again, I let the Fulton team as well as the College Park team work out those numbers. So, that is that, the actual timeline development. So, I would say to that, that that is a precaution for this IGA and not necessarily the actual development timeline.
Well, we don't know how many houses are gonna be-
We know we're gonna do a, a, at least a minimum of two.
Hold on, let him, let him finish.
I apologize.
Okay, and, and we don't know how long it's gonna take, that's what, I guess, that's what's confusing me.
Yes, and part of the IGA, so when Angela and I began working on this, um, we did anticipate some slow ups in working through this document because of how we received it. Um, so we did build in additional time into it to ensure that because of those delays that this project did not have to come back before this body form amendment to this document, um, this is still being worked through for program management through community development at Fulton County, for myself with sustainable development, and with our project manager, um, of Micro Life Institute. So, we can provide, um, if approved, we would be able to provide a more tentative, um, timeline for this development. But this is the point that we've entered this project at, which was the IGA. And to answer your question, per the code for cottage homes, there would need to be a minimum of two homes. If the four homes, then it would need to have a shared corridor, so we know that at the very minimum, there would be a minimum of two homes. As far as the, um, information is well stated, uh, we, that will determine the maximum number of homes that could be had on the property.
Well, that brings up another problem, you're talking about taking care of the land, and, and you said, you know, if there's a homeowners association, the homeowners association will take care of, of the land. Well, if you only have two houses, do they have, are you gonna have a homeowners association, or what are you gonna, what are you gonna have there? Uh, because if it says, you know, I always thought the builder took care of it until the homeowners, uh, this kind of says that once the homeowners take over, and if there's only two houses, then Fulton County is no longer responsible. If there's no homeowners association, they're not responsible, and then College Park is gonna be cutting the grass for two or three years.
So, in Will and I speaking, um, this actually began as a tiny home development, which focuses on homes that have a very, uh, lot smaller square footage. Um, by definition, we are actually looking at cottage homes, a cottage home can be between four hundred square feet up until about fourteen hundred square feet per the code that was brought before you. If we are looking at only two homes, then we would be more aligned to have the cottage home style, which is already similar to the historic homes within the, um, the original historic homes within the neighborhood. So, in that case, if we're looking at, let's say, two homes with a square footage between maybe, let's say, seven fifty up to eleven hundred square feet, that plot could be subdivided, and then those two owners would be responsible for their properties versus having the, um, HOA as stated.
So, we have two lots that we're gonna give you all. When do we start getting money from College Park, or do we?
I'm sorry, repeat the question?
If we give you the, the, we give you the land, you build on it, and then you rent it out or sell it out, who gets the money? Do you get the money from the sale, or who gets the money?
So, the original plan, which is what is moving forward, is that this is a pilot project to build more. So, the idea is to create fee simple structures, then we would be able to create a fund that we would be able to build the next project after this project.
Whether, is that gonna be in College Park, or do you know where that is, or are we just gonna be a pilot where you bring somebody to see the, see the houses?
I am working with Fulton County, it would be within Fulton County. And so, we would need to have another conversation if we would like to do it in College Park, again, I would love to continue on because I would like to keep building.
I just, I just have problems because we don't know if we're gonna have two houses, if we're gonna have four houses. I mean, we got two nice sized lots, and if you have two houses, uh, and they're right together, I don't know how you're gonna split that up among, among the lots. But you don't know if you're gonna have two, or you don't know if you're gonna have four. You don't know if you're gonna have to pipe it, or until you do the land disturbance, I just have a lot of questions. And I think we need to kind of, I, I just, I have a lot of questions that I haven't got answers to, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Gay?
Well, thank, well, a couple of things, sounds very complicated, but sounds like a good project as well, a couple of things. You know, I would like when we have guests, that they be on their agenda a lot earlier, this gentleman been here since seven o'clock, I remember saying, hey, it's going on eleven twenty-three, and I think the only person here really making money is the lawyers from what they said on their presentation. You know, I think he should, but that was just being some, some guy's humor, but the other thing is that, um, I would also recommend that this had kind of gone through planning and then presented to us maybe before this meeting, because honestly, for me, I'll be lying to you, Ms. Garrison. I really can't really process this to where it'll be fair to the process to us, to, I just think for me, getting this, I know this has been to us before, but even with these development projects, you know how we do BID, how they have a relaxed atmosphere, how they can come and they can present, and you, just doing it like this, for me, it's, it, I don't know if it does the project justifiable, and, and then we got other things on the agenda, and then it, how do we, how do we process and treat those, those, so? And then the other thing I wanna say is that, um, isn't there like your fourth time coming down here on the same project? And didn't Councilman Carr give the directive that we were supposed to get it right before it came back?
Well, I'll have some comments, I think I know what, I, I can tell you what happened.
Oh, well, I thought we was a done deal, I thought tonight was, so, Mayor, what about my motion? We got a motion even though he thought we was talking about the bus, we have a motion.
We do.
So, and that's a second?
Yes.
So, you could call it a vote?
I'm gonna go through again. Councilmember Clay?
I, I have no more comments or questions, sir.
Councilmember Carr?
I, I'll second the motion, uh-
The motion's already been seconded.
It's been seconded, did I second it, or did someone else second it?
No, sir.
Uh, I may have some discussion afterwards, but, uh, uh, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward, let's get the kink straightened out.
Do, do you have any further discussion now?
No, not now.
Councilmember Allen?
I just, you know, there's too many things that I don't know about, I don't know if College Park is getting any money, I don't know how many houses, I don't know, you know, we talk about the land disturbance and the permits, it could be two and a half years, but now that, you know, it could be a lot sooner. There's a lot of, lot of ifs, and, and until we get, I just can't, I can't vote for it all until we get that.
Can you abstain?
Councilmember Gay, wait, hold on, no, 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 Councilmember Gay, if you have any further comment?
I just wanna move it on, it's been here, is that fifth time coming back? I don't understand what we need as a body to determine how to resolve this.
Hold on, hold on, wait, Councilmember Gay, do you have any, if you're, Ms. Matty Carter, are you gonna be answering his question, go right ahead?
Um, so, one of the things that I changed in this most recent version is that, so, the cottage home is a, is a conditional use, and Fulton County is subjecting themselves to the zoning process. They're gonna have to come back to get a conditional use permit, and anything that is more strict, like if you, if you impose an additional conditions, and those are more strict than this IGA, that controls. So, whichever is more restrictive, controls, so I think a lot of these, um, questions and issues could be addressed at the, at the zoning phase. I mean, I, in an ideal scenario, all of this would have occurred prior to the IGA, um, I think- I think, for lack of a better word, the cart was put before the horse. But given the, the timeline of this project, I think there's sufficient procedural safeguards, as, as much so as, as we could actually put in there. But of course, if this is something that wants to be considered further later, you can adopt more stringent requirements at the zoning phase.
Councilmember Gay, any additional questions?
No, but thank you for clarifying it.
Ms. Matticardi, I do have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Why did we put the cart before the horse and can we put the horse in front of the cart?
Um, that was not the city of College Park that did so. For lack, Fulton County already approved this agreement. They were adamant about getting this agreement before doing any work. So.
Let me make sure I understand everything in the agreement.
Okay.
So it's done by December thirty-first, 2026. If it gets signed tomorrow, the effective date is October seventeenth, 2023? No? Okay.
So it still needs approval from BIDA?
Right. So that's even further out. I mean, if, if we could sign it tomorrow, Fulton County would still have twelve months to get an LDP, correct? And then another eighteen months to do grading and utilities. So that potentially takes us out to April seventeenth of 2026 on a-
So those, those provisions survive the termination of this agreement. So anything regarding, it's the reconveyance, anything regarding the first right of refusal, the right of approval, those extend, those survive the termination of this agreement. They're also gonna be incorporated in the deed. So it's, it runs with the land despite the, this being no longer in effect. It's similar, kinda set it up similar to how BIDA does other transactions and their, their purchase and sale agreements, where that, that also runs with the land.
And the county board's designated agent will be solely responsible for the home buyer selection process, correct?
Correct.
So the city has no input in that?
No. Other than having the community outreach representative being appointed by the city.
But we don't know the extent or the nature-
Of course, like they won't, that, that's just basically-
Sure.
Be keeping in the loop. There's not anything that requires them to, to do what we say.
Is it... I, I heard Councilman Clay's concerns about having a pipe farm at the end of 2026. Or, I mean, I think initially when I, when I heard about this project, the eight homes were being discussed. Now, we don't know. And it might be one, two, four, or eight, or something in between. Correct?
As to the, I mean, the legal basis, I-
To be a minimum of two.
A minimum of two. And are there any other projected sources of funding? Other than the million dollars?
Yes, we, I do plan on utilizing other financial means of being able to get a construction loan, be able to do, have the ability to sell the houses because the ARPA funds allows us to subsidize. There still will be mortgages, so people would be purchasing.
And of the million dollars, your program management fee is how much?
The first year is three thirty.
The first year is three thirty?
Mm-hmm.
So what about the second year?
That is also fundraising on my part.
Understood. So... So of the million dollars, we've got about-
Six eighty.
Six eighty, six seventy left?
Yes.
So the, and, and, alright. I'll go through one more time. Councilmember Clay?
No, I, I have no more questions. I stated my position early on.
Councilmember Carr?
Uh, no questions.
Councilmember Allen?
So if you've got a million dollars and you're three thirty, so they got six seventy to spend, and if you have to work on the creek and land disturbance and, and grade and trees and everything else, you might not even be able to build but one house. I mean, I love, I love the tiny home concept. I just wish we had a commitment to, to do eight homes without running out of money or, or something of that sort. I just, I don't wanna have one house sitting there or two houses sitting there. We have no control. We've given the land away, so we don't get anything in from it. I just got problems. And I don't know, Councilman Carr, you mentioned you knew the source or something of that sort?
Well, yeah, the city manager, you know, we talked about this last month, two months ago, that this would be slowed down to a snail's pace and pretty much completely derailed. You remember we had that conversation? And true to what I said, you're looking at it. And you remember the reason I told you why as well? At one point, we had agreed Fulton County and College Park on five hundred square feet. That's off the table. Now it's anything. We agreed upon a twelve-month target completion. Now that's off the table. I understand Tasha and Angela extended those things and the eighteen-month dates and everything, like you said, y'all did. Great. So this can be considered a success for some that wanted this to be the outcome. Obviously, for Fulton County as well as for the city as a whole, I don't think it would be. But for some, it is a success because we're here where we are. Just like I pretty much mentioned to you that we would end up here, and I told you the reasons why.
Therefore, therefore?
Oh, that's all I had?
Oh.
It's call for the vote?
Councilmember Allen, did you have anything to add?
No, I just can't vote for anything that I don't, that I don't understand. There's too many ifs. I wish we'd have put the cart in front of the horse at the very beginning, 'cause then I think we would have built buildings.
So who has, who made the motion and who seconded?
You seconded. Councilmember Gay made the motion. All those in favor?
I withdraw my second.
Oh, withdraw your second, okay. Councilmember Gay, is your motion still stand?
Yes.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright. All those in favor?
But, 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 but it was a discussion coming in and he interrupted the discussion. It was my time to talk.
Councilmember Gay, I, I apologize on that. Thank you. Go right ahead.
I just had a question, which wasn't so much for against the project. Fulton County has inventory land. Was there any reason why you even chose College Park and not just go after their inventory land?
I was sent a spreadsheet of about, maybe a hundred parcels. I scoured quickly and the ones that were actually big enough were down close to Saranby. So kind of outside of the metro Atlanta area that we really wanted to be. So, but then this parcel was brought up to us through conversations and was presented and the fact that it is a walkable, connected area towards downtown College Park. It just seems like an excellent parcel for a potential project.
Ms. Garrison, what was that project called when Mr. Jones was here? Was Chris Norman from Fulton County trying to get cities to deed their land into their, what was it called?
Land bank.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, sir?
Yes.
The spreadsheet was Fulton County land bank inventory? Cause they, you said it close-
It was sent to me by Stanley Wilson, so that's community development in Fulton County.
So you thinking that's their land bank? It wasn't, have you seen their land bank inventory?
I have not.
I, I have. This property, if we did this with Fulton County, would go into the land bank to keep the prices down where they wouldn't escalate. That was the purpose of absorbing it into the land bank once we did a transfer of the property to the county.
Even that's ambiguous in here.
Well, and it's not by accident. I'll just put it that way. So.
So the land bank conversation was discussed when we met initially with Fulton County. The land bank has not come to the conversation. It was stated that they would be talking through Fulton County. We as development staff and with the project management team have concurred to see that there are other opportunities that may be more fruitful related to taxing and to still reach the same goals without the property going to the land bank. So as far as since I've been a part of this deal, that has not been a part of the conversation, nor have I spoken with anyone from the land bank as related to this IGA.
Who's talking?
Councilmember Gay, you still up?
Does. Do you still get the million dollars if you decide not to go with our land?
Um, yes, the project will direct to another parcel.
I'll go through one more time since there was a, a change on that second. Councilmember Clay?
Well, I just have an observation. When it takes this much time, conversation, and still has this many question marks to move a project forward, there should be a little red light going on in the back of my head that says, I made it, I lied earlier. I don't, I don't see how I can even vote for this. Not just my personal observation. I love, I love the concept, but I just don't see the probability of this project actually working is in, might even be in single, single digits.
Councilmember Carr?
Well, city manager, city attorney, this is a textbook example of economic development in this city. And when a project is, when someone is determined to make sure it does not happen, how it can come off the rails. So we are where we are. And like I said, I mentioned this to you two months ago, so it shouldn't be a surprise.
Councilmember Allen?
I just, you know, I, I like the project. Could, could you guarantee us that we would have at least four houses there?
As soon as I get the green light and I have my architect tell me what I can build with the land as well as with the floodplain, I will gladly tell you the numbers. But I'm not gonna stand here and tell you what I can do when I don't know yet because I'm don't, I'm not allowed to spend any money yet on architects or groups that actually know what they're doing to build, to, to, to design.
Councilmember Gay?
Yeah, it's gotten so late. You know, I watch a lot of Shark Tank and, I go to watch Shark Tank every night. But that one lady, she always says, "I like the project. I don't like you." But seriously, oh, I mean, I think Fulton County has been in this business a long time and I don't think they will be involved in something that is not feasible. I think it's been thought, thought out. I don't want you to take away that, that your project is so unique from what we do here as a city. A lot of our projects are convoluted. I got one right now that's been dragging for two years, a year. I got, I got the Pure Gas Station on Main Street. I celebrated. I'm the one who helped get it sold. And he got a, what, half million dollar EPA grant? He still ain't broke ground. So I don't want you to take anything away from this, that we, that is your project. So I think we need to move forward, guys, and just, the lawyer explained that there's so many other controls in place. I think we're just trying to move it to the next base. That would've sounded like we're trying to do tonight. So our motion stands.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor?
Uh, no.
Oh, wait, hold on. All those opposed?
No.
Alright, so councilmembers Carr and Gay are in favor. Councilmembers Clay and Allen are opposed. There are way too many questions on this. I am opposed as well at this time. I would think that we should, if we, if we can get it to the point where there aren't as many, I'm, I love the concept, but they're not, it is not ready for primetime right now. So the motion fails.
Ms. Garrison, I'd like to get his card, sir, because that may be an opportunity to partner in a public-private partnership to whether land may in fact not nearly be as complicated as this if it's still eligible for his grant. So if we could, clerk, get his card?
Sure, I'll do an introduction.
Ma'am?
I'll do an introduction so the clerk has the information provided.
And, and Tasha, just for the record, so essentially Fulton County has slowed this project down. They put the cart before the horse and they put in these delays that caused the delays. Is that right, city planner, Natasha?
I wouldn't agree fully with that, no.
Well, that's what I heard from the two of you all here in terms of why this and why that.
That's not what I stated.
Okay. Well, alright, that's what I heard you say. And it's on the video, but if you say you didn't say it, I guess it'll erase itself. So, okay, got it.
No ma'am? No ma'am?
That's the city planner.
Oh, oh. Hadn't met you yet. Sorry. Yes, ma'am. Come on down.
I thought she was the city planner.
Mayor, council, good evening. I am Carlotta Singleton, representative from TCF. The collaborative firm is the city planner replacement Angela Rembo. I would just ask, what are the questions that needs to remedy the IGA before bringing it back for consideration? And what do we take to Fulton County to get it to that point from the mayor and council? I think those would need to be questions that are given to staff to move this forward and not to just let it linger.
Councilmember Clay?
Do you have my question?
Yes.
Any questions on your end, Councilman Carr?
Well, I would say you're the project manager. You and, where's the other fellow? It's been four months. Pretty much every parameter that we discussed at the meeting that I was at is completely vanished. So I suggest if you all still are gonna work on this project, you get in the room and get it together on behalf of the city in. And again, if the county has put these obstacles in place that has made things difficult, which is what I did here and the rest of the public did, then so be it. You all are the experts. You're economic development.
I am.
So let's get together and see if we can figure it out.
Yes, sir. I actually have met with Fulton County.
Let him finish.
Okay, my apologies.
Again, get with Fulton County. Let's figure it out.
So I have met with Fulton County. I do meet with them on almost a bi-weekly basis. As our city planner has stated, I did receive concerns from members of council. If there's any additional concerns, please feel free to email those in. I think that a lot of the questions that I hear coming from the body are related to the project management, which in turn will tell us what the architectural design will be as well as the layout. That is not information that we're currently able to provide. So I will circle back with the Fulton County team with your comments from tonight and see if we can get some approval for them to move it forward.
And he's the project management, the fellow behind you, right?
Yes.
And you've been meeting and talking with him for four months? Well, not you, but-
Yeah, not me. But when you all seen me last, that was me. And Will and I meet very frequently. We actually have partnered up in this. So I actually speak with Will, if not more than equal to the same amount that I speak with everyone else from Fulton County, going from their senior council to their director of community development- to their director of community development, their director of health.
All right, well, that's quite a partnership. All right, thanks.
Councilmember Allen? No, I mean, what were the questions that you would need resolved?
Uh, I've got a list up here. I'll get you those tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Anything on your end, Councilmember Gay?
Just following up on my comment, I would like, well, first off, Mr. Dean, do you have some comments?
Will, I just wanted to add about, uh, Councilman Allen's, uh, question about how many, how many can be built there? We do not know until we have a, uh, proper plan and a survey done. This is very close to the floodplain, so we have to have that setbacks, all that. And that can be only done, determined after a proper survey is conducted and the drawings there. Then we, the planning and we can sit. So therefore, I don't think it would be reasonable for them to give us a number, how many property, how many, uh, houses can be built at this time.
So Dean, uh?
No, hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
Yes.
Let me, Councilmember Carn, go ahead.
Are you saying that there hasn't been a survey yet even in these four months?
He, he, he has a survey, but when it comes to the floodplain and the, how the proximity is, I didn't see that part.
Then, then you haven't seen the survey evidently?
It will ha- yeah, I haven't seen the survey with the floodplain determination. So there is a plot survey done, but I haven't seen it with the, uh, pu- uh, because we have to make sure that it is beyond, it, it had the setback of the five hundred average, uh, uh, floodplain setback.
City manager, I told you two months ago, this project would come to a screeching halt because of who brought it to the table, did I not? I'm a, I'm a man of my word.
Councilmember Allen?
No, I just gotta say there's a, there's a creek that goes along the back of it. And I think I asked this question to you once before. How far away from the creek do you have to, you have to go before you can build?
It is the, the, the bank. We, we, we look at the bank, the fi- five hundred, uh, year average flood level. From there, it's fifty feet. So to the property, but it doesn't affect any, um, uh, any access points, but it is fifty feet from that, that play, that point where we measure uh, as the five hundred foot, uh, flood, uh, flow area.
But they could put a pipe back in the back and build closer?
No, they cannot do that. That, that will af- affect our flood rating system and it will compromise our rating systems of the city, the compromises. So it'll be, we, we could move forward with it, but then we'll have penalties to pay down the line. Because we kind of let them do, uh, which is kind of violating the FEMA's.
Who ba- who pays for that? Fulton County does that?
Well, no, they, the, the, the developer will have to do that if they're doing any mitigation stuff. Because they have to make sure that they are above the floodplain, including equipment, so there is a base, blaze flood level and everything has to be about three foot above. And, uh, I guess the planner could also add, uh, more to this.
That would be sufficient, but there's also?
Ms. Singleton, can you please move to the microphone? Thank you.
That, that would be sufficient for the floodplain, but there's also incumbent on that. It's a state, uh, requirement for a stream buffer. So that would also come into play as well. So in terms of the developer, he would absorb the cost for those, uh, environmental considerations and then even coming for a stream buffer variance if that is what is necessary to.
So Fulton County would bear those, those costs?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Councilmember Clay, were you saying something?
No, I have, I have a number of questions.
I think I went out of turn again. I think it was coming.
Well, we've already taken the vote. I mean, I-
We voted?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you voted. So we, so?
The, the vote has been taken. Ms. Singleton wanted to ask if, what we needed in terms of additional information to?
She told me.
Yeah.
I, I've given all my information.
All right. Thank you. Item nine G is move, a motion to approve purchase in a sales agreement for seven point four seven acres from the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, otherwise known as MARTA. Ms. Hall-Gerson?
Um, about July eleventh of twenty twenty-two, consensus was provided from this body for, uh, City of College Park to purchase the property versus having a quick claim from the development authority. When the body returned into regular session, there was not an action made. This is a budgeted item and the action will need to be made for the sales, uh, purchase and sales agreement to be executed.
Councilmember Clay, any questions?
Yeah, I, I, I think I probably sent this to you on, on one twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
Page one and twenty-two, uh, the limited warranty deed about, well, the bottom paragraph. And the way I read that, city attorney, I don't know, or, or city attorneys, uh, the way I read that, uh, in theory, MARTA could sometime in the future decide to build a train maintenance facility on this property. I just gave that specific example. And the way that's worded, that's the way I interpreted that. That's a possibility. Do I believe it's gonna happen? No. Do I think MARTA would do that to us? No. But from a technical standpoint in the agreement, is that true that they could do that?
So no. The reason that that language is in the document is because this is water retention area for MARTA. Being that we are developing a nature preserve to also serve as a water retention area, that language is there so that it would stay with the future of the land. So basically, the City of College Park could not come and build something other than a nature reserve or a water retention detention on this property.
I, I, okay, but, um.
So short answer, no.
But isn't it true that if MARTA decided they wanted to do that? I know they wouldn't want to do that.
No, so?
Well, here, here, all right, let me read it then. The grantor expressly reserves, et cetera, et cetera, a non-exclusive, permanent, perpetual, non-revocable easement, i.e., regardless of whether we own the property or not, they've got this right into over, under, across, through the property for any and all purposes, MARTA purposes, not our purposes, MARTA purposes, and replacement of rail, rapid transit system, water drainage, et cetera, et cetera. That could be a maintenance philo- facility for the rail rapid transit system, could it not?
I'll let Danielle answer specifics.
I mean, what is a replacement of a rail rapid transit system? What, what, what kinds of things fall in that category?
Well, I will say that that language is mandated, um, by MARTA for federal funding and the Federal Transportation, um, Authority, I believe that was. Um, they've made it clear that, that this land is not suitable for any of that. Um.
That they what?
They've made it clear, obviously, it's, it's in writing, it is in the deed, that they could if, if they want it.
Do what I just said?
They could.
Okay. Not that I think they're gonna do it.
Yeah, but the land is not, like, as a matter of fact, the land's not suitable. So on, in pa- on paper, they could, but in fact, they cannot. Um, yeah.
Well, in practice, they wouldn't.
In practice, they wouldn't and it, it's just not suitable. They just couldn't.
I know. I, my father said I should have been an attorney, but. Okay, uh, that's all I had. I, I, I wanna do this, but I'm just trying to figure out why we've got that language in there.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it was one of the things we tried to get out.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clay. Is there a second?
I'll second. Can I follow your approach?
No, sir. It was discussed, but the action was not made. So once we did the research to have the, uh, document executed, that's when it was found that the action was, did not occur.
All right. Councilmember Carn?
All right, so this isn't a free and clear transfer of land, basically. Strings attached and they could build what they want over there. It's, uh, you know, I understand the idea is just pristine nature preserve, but they can run their pipes through and it's only being sold to us with the availability of it being used as a potential retention pond or whatever else by MARTA in addition to, essentially. Um, when you said the land is not suitable, you meant not suitable for running those pipes through and all the things that they're allowed to do?
The size of it, it just can't be done. Um, the size, the location.
On seven acres?
Um, well, so the where, where their existing rail lines and facilities are, it just, it's not suitable. It wouldn't make any logical sense to have something there.
And with seven acres, they couldn't possibly reconfigure something to make something work if they needed an additional seven?
No, sir.
Okay. Right. Well, I, I don't think that's the case necessarily at all and it wouldn't have been in the contract if that weren't the case. And they wouldn't have stuck to their guns insisting that it remain in there if it, uh, was not suitable and not doable, as you said it was. So.
So.
Uh, and to Ambrose's question, you never mentioned the kinds of things that fall into the category of that language. What are the kind of things that would fall into the category of that language?
So for noise mitigation, that was one of the things that was, um, referenced. Um, and it would be noise mitigation for the nearest rail. So.
What does that mean?
I, I'm an attorney. I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of what exactly MARTA does, um, to decrease the noise from their rail lines, um, assuming like retaining walls, things of that nature.
Hold on, please let her finish.
I will say that the existing deed had language in there, which is similar to a restrictive covenant requiring that this land be a retention pond, um, or some other, other suitable thing. So MARTA would in itself, um, be in violation of the prior, um, grantors and the prior deed language if this was done.
Well, it's an issue for MARTA. Otherwise, they wouldn't have insisted on that statement.
Probably their standard boilerplate.
Councilmember Clay?
Yeah, uh, that, that may be true, but, uh, at the end of the day, um, and if they wanna use that land for a buffer or whatever it is, um, I think I, I got an understanding of that. Uh, as, as you all know, I was not in support of this as well. We have a mandate to our residents. We have a mandate to our financial, financial responsibility to sell property that we have not sold yet, whereas we have solid viable offers. But we're doing the opposite. We're buying land that I think is questionable and attempting and wanting to build a park, a nature preserve and another park where we don't have the capacity to maintain the parks that we have now. So, um, I'm not for this. Uh, I think we need to get what we have and what we own now together, get it maintainable and manageable as opposed to biting off something new when we have yet to master maintaining what we have now.
Councilmember Allen?
Now, we talked about this today and I got all my questions answered, so thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
A couple of quick questions. You know, that's, that's why this election is so critical. You know, the worst of my ward comes here, the worst of my ward comes here every week. Handful of people. You don't see them nowhere about the budget. They're not here about anything. But they come down here and pontificate the individual. And here we're talking about, well, let me ask y'all a question. I thought that the grant was gonna pay for the land.
So we would be refunded. If we received the grant, then the funds used for the property would be counted as a match towards the grant.
So we'll get this hundred, we'll get this money back if we get the grant?
Correct.
So why, does the grant require us to own the land before we can't get it?
Yes, sir. The grant, um, a majority of the grants that we're going after as well request that we own the property before we are able to take, um, the cost. But as well for us to be reimbursed for it, we have to initially make that cost.
Now, other nature reserve, how much other actual headwalls of the flint will be redeveloped? Or is it just the area around the headwall?
It would be the entire property. So there would be a full stream restoration. Um, currently, there are concrete conduits, uh, where the stream lays. Uh, we would be in the plan looking to take those out. We would also be lengthening the, uh, the river stream. So it has more of a natural curve, um, to it as well as to replace the concrete with river rock, which is a more, uh, porous sub, uh, material so that it can have, um, cleaner water as it filters south.
Now, the, the water that's under the Hartsfield Airport, approximately how, how many, how mu- how many leni foot is under the airport?
I would need to verify with the sustainability department of the airport, but I can get that to you.
Do you suspect that water is running through a very sophisticated piping system or it's just flowing freely? Anybody would know?
I saw foot pipes.
You know what capacity that was, four foot, thirty?
Capacity that goes right behind the Delta, uh, airplanes back there and it goes underneath.
I can get that information for you, but I do know it's a water source for the airport as well.
And as far as disturbing the waters of the state, has the city engineer had a chance to look at this project? Have you weighed in on this as far as what the waters of the state allow us to do? And she said a full restoration. I don't know what that means. That could mean put some gravel in a creek. What does that mean? Full restoration?
I have not looked at the, this particular project, uh, but, um, I can look into it.
Would you, I have a couple of quick questions. So, oh, let's remind the, the, the public, this finding of flint is a grant from, what, what agency? What agency was this?
So this actually has to do with two grants. The one that we last came before you with was the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program, which is a grant to help towards the, um, phasing as far as the full development of the nature preserve. If we receive that grant, we would be able to develop this park within the next two fiscal years. This property is also, because of its location on Willingham Drive, a part of the Resilient Communities Grant, um, that was written through the Atlanta Regional Commission, um, because this is listed as a capital improvement along the LCI Livable Centers Initiative of the Willingham Corridor.
So the Georgia Department of Natural Resources grant, we didn't get that one, right?
We just applied a fes-
Again, again, right?
We did. So last year, we ranked, um, I wanna say number six, um, within the top. We did not make the top cutoff, but this year we did submit on Friday. Uh, we will find out in the spring if we make it to the second round and then if we make it to the second round, we'll receive confirmation in the summer.
So what happens if we don't get this grant? What do we do about this land we just purchased? Do we come back and ask us to make a, what do, how do we improve it if we don't get the grant?
So currently, um, as listed in the packet, there is a sixty thousand dollar donation from Coca-Cola, um, to be reimbursed to the city towards the purchase of this property. We also have received over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Some of that is specific to the water sustainability on the project. So if we were not able to receive the full grant from DNR, we would be able to still begin the project with the grants received from our private funders.
So where's the three thirty at, city manager? Is it in the fund? The three thirty, is that in our budget?
No, sir. That is actually was provided to you when I last came before you with the funding resolution. I provided an Excel with a breakdown of all donations that were made towards this development totaling three hundred thirty thousand. And it does state specifically what donations are to.
Where's that money? In our general fund?
We have not received it yet as we have not began this project. So once we purchase the property, um, then that first donation of sixty thousand would be issued back to finance. And as we begin the project, we could then be using the funds. Currently, the funds have been, um, I guess there's a letters written, uh, from the companies confirming their donation, but we have not began development.
So that, so we haven't received any money, but you have three hundred and thirty thousand in pledged donations contingent, contingent on us getting the other money to develop this. Is that, is that right?
Not contingent upon us getting the other money. Um, some of them is contingent upon us in the development, but there are specific donations that were made. that were made towards specific portions of the park, such as marketing, such as water sustainability, such as gardens. There's, there's, it's on the document.
Why do we, why is it necessary for us to approve 158,000 to purchase it? Why can't we just wait and see if we get the, the Georgia, the other two grants, the larger grants? Why do we have to purchase the land? And, and, and help me understand why we gotta purchase the land now?
Sure. So the land would need to be purchased first to show that the city is serious in this endeavor. We have been working towards this for seven years, as well as we do have funders that are pending, waiting on us to purchase this property, so that they can honor additional funds. I've also received information from the Conservation Fund that they have staff dedicated to assist us with the development of additional green spaces. But the City of College Park has not shown that we can move forward with the current project that we are being assisted with. So in short, the purchase of this property not only helps the development of the first nature preserve in the city, it also allows the city to open up to other opportunity for grants for green space, as well as collaboration from the Conservation Fund.
Oh, too, I'm about done there. What do you call a nature preserve? Because it has water on it?
No. So we call it a nature preserve because it would be a dedicated green space. There would be no development. As Attorney Danielle Matri Cardi stated, there is no opportunity for development on this site. It is strictly for water retention between the East Point and College Park train station. When we state nature preserve, some of the ideas that came from the community during our outreach charrettes was observation deck, so that residents could see the wildlife. There is a water waiting station. There are walking trails that are ADA compliant. We also have pollinator gardens, as well as edible gardens that were selected by the community.
Like Cascade Springs, perhaps?
Got you. Exactly.
So let me ask you a question. I'm done. So you've been advocating for this for seven years. I've been advocating for Camp Truitt since 1998. And I don't know if this is, I mean, this is a good opportunity for me to bring this up. And bear with me, Mr. Lock, I don't talk that much, so it's, but I'm passionate about this. So I've been advocating for Camp Truitt since 1998. And it's 20 acres. It can't be developed. It has water on it. Why, I'm just asking you, why aren't you also advocating for other desirable green space in our community? Why, why just this? And why is my colleagues so eager to support this and run another man out the door? We want to put peoples in houses, you know, we want to create homeownership. So why is this project so important?
I wouldn't say that this project is more than important than another project. What I can say with this project that is in comparison to Fulton County is that with Fulton County, we do have the opportunity to assist with programming. I have yet to meet or be introduced to a staff member from Fulton County that I can assist with programming and/or grants to better improve their structure. I welcome the opportunity. This project actually was something that was brought forth by the community. Seven years ago, community members came to me in regards to this property, which they were introduced to by our former city engineer, William Moore. So the difference between this project and Camp Truitt, to be short, is that this one was community-led. And with Camp Truitt, we had the same exact opportunity if we can be introduced to the right decision-makers.
I want to close by making a comment. This is a perfect textbook example of environmental injustice. And environmental injustice ain't always putting smoke factories. It's also how you feel. You know, a couple of miles away, it ain't suitable, you know. But over these, but over this point, because it's next to a bus station, it ain't, oh, it's great. That's, that's environmental injustice. Prejudice comes in all forms and fashions. It's not name calling always. It's how you think. It's how you feel. Let me just close by educating y'all on something. So just, you need to know this. In the eighties, a group of women approached the then late Maynard Jackson. And this is why you need a mayor with vision. And they said, listen, Peet my Park, we're talking about Peet my Park. We all know Peet my Parks. Booker T. Washington, my alumni president, gave that great speech about Negroes. And what I want to say to you is that, you know, they said, Maynard, let us acquire this land. And they put a trailer on it. One of them was J. P. Foucault's wife. Very prominent women. Maynard being the visionary he is, he goes, you know how Maynard is, go for it. So he let them sit there. Ninety-seven, quite seven years, Ms. Garrison. And I want to make a point about leadership, equitable distribution of how we think. Not just about how we vote. Equitable distribution of how we think. And so here's what happened. It became known as the Peet Mount Park Conservatory. And then Elton John came and did a concert. And then they raised hundreds of millions of dollars. It's only 19 acres. 19 acres. Same amount of acres of Camp Truitt across from the busiest airport in the world. And I was close by saying this. If you look at Camp Truitt, Denmark, and you go down there tonight on your way and you drive by Peet Mount Park, the economic impact, Meredith, attorney, Meredith, the economic impact that that community has had, it's, it's not, you can't even imagine. If you go to Peet Mount, if you go right around there now, you cannot even believe how a green space built up that community. So I might be a bully, but I don't bully about things that matter to people's lives. So I'm not gonna vote for this, but I needed to let you know, and this community know, it's time to get serious about what we want to be, what we want to look like, and where we want to go. And voting together all the time is not true leadership. That's not leadership. It's funny, but guess what? Young girls could become stewards of the environment because they might get turned on and educated to things that matter. I, I substitute talk at College Park Elementary School, and I do this thing every day. I ask the kids, y'all stand right here. Each one of y'all tell me what you want to be. I want to be a barber, a cop, a rapper, a dancer, an athlete. Not one of them want to do any non-traditional careers. They don't want to be meteorologists. They don't want to be soil conservationists. They don't want to be grant writers, because they don't know. And our job up here is to use the power of this mic in our seats to ensure that they know after we've left.
Thank you. For the record, I wasn't laughing. I'm just tired.
I could not agree more with Councilman Gay.
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Well, I, I couldn't agree more with him, because I think this is an issue of environmental justice. This 7.47 acres sits in a industrial area where we have not a whole heck of a lot of access to nature. And the opportunities, I, I think, I think College Park Elementary, as he said, is a, is a great example of a group of children in our community that could be really impacted in a tremendously positive way by this development. By us making the investment to say that we care about levels of access where there hasn't been access, that we are providing chances for not only children, but their families to have a connection to green space and this amazing resource that we have in our backyard that most people don't even know about. The fact that the second largest river in Georgia becomes visible in our city, but most people don't have access to see it. They don't have access to enjoy it. So this is something that this body supported to the point where it was a budgeted item. And so now it is time to make a decision on whether or not that budgeted item gets allocated. Mr., I'm sorry. Muhari, I was, I, I had a blank there. Sorry, after midnight. But, yes, sir?
Councilman Gay suggested that I do some research on it. So I would like to ask with your permission through the city manager that I will have to use the services of a hydrogeologist to do the study. And it has to be approved by you for the, for that study to move forward, if you want me to do the research on it. It, it needs specialized study, because it is a state waterway. And I will have to get the services of a hydrogeologist.
I'm just not sure.
Hold on, Ms. Hall Garrison wants to add something.
Yes, I did have a comment, because this is actually a brownfield project. We do have the multi-purpose grant, so I don't know what was requested. I was not aware of the request, but I can work with engineering, as well as our consultants, to be able to honor that request.
Well, Tasha, a couple, couple of questions for you and Dean.
I'm sorry, I thought.
Yeah, Councilman Gay, actually.
No, I, I was saying, I was saying, I like the fact that you, y'all can piggyback on me, on my words, and pinch it to something else. But let me bring it back to my words. It is environmental justice, because I got nine creeks in Ward for, Ms. Garrison. If you want to go to some creeks, I got plenty of creeks, okay? If it was so important, Hartsfield wouldn't have concrete over it flying million-dollar jets if it was so important, okay? So don't, don't, don't patronize me. Support me. Y'all hear you saying nothing about Camp Truitt. You gonna jump into another conversation. You know, this ain't harboring the debate. But so your point is, you got money in the Brownsfield grant to pay for his hydrology study. That was the question.
I don't, I don't know what study you're referring to, but what I am offering is the.
Councilman Gay, please let her finish.
Thank you.
I was trying, she don't know.
Councilman Gay. Councilman, Councilman, please let her finish. Ms. Hall Garrison, go ahead.
This is a project that has been supported, supported through the EPA. We have a multi-purpose grant to assist with assessments, potential cleanups. So no, I do not know, because the request was not made to me. But now that I am aware, I am willing to work with the city engineer to offset whatever costs, since we have grant funding available.
I just, all I'm trying to say is, so I've done a lot of work at the Chattahoochee Nature Reserve down on Laurel Roswell Road. I mean, I couldn't even put impervious surfaces in the back of mansions without the state coming over there drilling me. And I'm just asking you, I just want to know, what are we trying to do to this headwall? You may seem to think that we're going to turn it to this big flowing creek, and I don't think that's the case. So I wanted to talk academic to say, you need to come back to this body and tell us, what, what are we really doing over here? Is this just some money we try? Can you, in terms of that headwater? That make sense? Thank you.
All right, Council, we'll, we'll go back through. Councilman Clay, anything?
No, I have nothing else to say.
Councilman Carr?
All right, it's getting late, but.
Yeah, very late.
Yeah. One thing I'll just point out, you know, the, we just saw two development projects for this city where the city engineer was pretty much completely out of the loop on both of them. He's not even CC'd on the documents. Both of them require some engineering, some level of engineering assessment, but for some reason, it wasn't there in a sense. And this is no disparage on you, city engineer, but economic development or whoever's driving the train on this project, MARTA's easement options. You know, obviously, they would need to be assessed by a certified engineer. Additionally, I mean, you know, basic site review, what we're talking about here. You know, feasibility, you know, from an engineering standpoint, you know, with water and stormwater and, and the whole nine. I wondered why there wasn't a map of this property in this, in this particular packet here. City engineer, have you seen a survey of this property? I guess a better question for city engineer.
Yes, sir.
I guess a better question would be, not just have you seen a survey of the property, but have you seen the property?
So what I would like to answer, although the question was not directed at me, is we have just gotten the city engineer. There have been engineers in working along this project for the past seven years through our agreement with our consultants. So I just wanted to make the body aware that the engineering has occurred. Thank you.
Dean, how long have you been with us?
About the item nine F, I have reviewed the, I have looked at the location.
So you have.
I have looked at the location and, but I haven't looked at it deeply in terms of where a house will be built or in relations to that.
Mr. Muhari, we're, we're still, we're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, he was answering both of my questions. In terms of both of these projects, I see that he was not in, in the, in the chain of the specifications and what's going on. But you have seen some of the tiny home.
On the nine F, yes. But on the nine G, I'm not aware of it.
All right. Well, I think it's a good idea to involve the city engineer with anything like this. Obviously, goes without saying. The engineer that was on it, are they here?
No, they are not, because we are just discussing the purchase and sales, which is a legal discussion.
Well, it's more than a legal discussion. It's about what we're purchasing and what MARTA can or cannot do as well. So I get where you're coming from, and it's great ideas on both sides. It's great arguments on both sides, you know. Nobody's wrong or right, but I want to make sure staff is in the loop on, on these things that are going on and that the proper departments are involved with all of this stuff when it comes before us, so.
Councilmember Allen?
No, I don't have any other questions. This has been approved before. All we're requesting is that we sign off.
Correct. The action is just made, so it's official.
Anything else, Councilmember Gay?
So we had all this discussion that this is approved, so we don't have an option to discuss it? That it not be approved, just to sign? Is that what we're doing here? Is that what we're saying, that this discussion was to sign an agreement?
So the discussion, the consensus had previously been given about a year ago. Once we went back, because MARTA is ready to execute, the document was placed into your packet for your review. When we came to provide the minutes along with the request for execution, it was found that once the body returned from executive session after giving consensus towards the purchase of this property, that that action had not been taken. And so we are now before you, a year later, to request for that formal action to be taken. This item was budgeted. We've, we've discussed it multiple times. The map has been provided multiple times. What's needed tonight is an action.
A quick question. Does this, does this still serve as a stormwater? Does this, does this still serve as a stormwater basin for the MARTA runoff back there? Is, is MARTA still dumping their stormwater into this basin?
I'm not familiar with that, no.
No, I, I'm just, conversation I had with Jason, Jackson Myers, that this stormwater basin was originally designed, not originally, but has been a source where MARTA parked, they dumped their water off. Is it still going into their MARTA runoff? Does anybody know?
Not, not intentional runoff. It is, serves as a water retention or detention area for if it rains, where the weather can go. But as far as intentional dumping, no.
So I went there with Bobby Wilson with Metro Forum. Quick question. Across the street, is that also part of the creek?
Um, under, across the street, over in the East Point boundary, that the creek or the river originates underneath in an underground spring in East Point. The first part that it daylights, it connects underneath Willingham Drive onto the 7.47 acres, and that's where it first daylights, which is in the City of College Park.
I don't have anything else.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so councilmembers Clay and Allen are in favor? All right, so councilmembers Clay and Allen are in favor. Councilmembers Carn and Gay are opposed. I am in favor, the motion passes. Item nine H is the GDOT extension for the pedestrian bridge, uh, to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Good evening, or good morning, Mr. Buhari.
Good morning. Yes, I am here to request the, um, change order extension with GDOT for this particular bridge project. Uh, it is beyond our control, and if we do not extend it, it can compromise, uh, our, and make it difficult, complicated with our, um, budget, the reimbursement process, because it's significantly ground-funded. Eighty percent of it comes from grants. So, I would kindly request to consider and approve it, and then I would need, um, mayors to sign off on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay?
No, I, I have no questions. I mean, we, we obviously need to do this. We've got the bridge nearly built. Needs to be trucked out here. I don't understand why it's taking so long. I'm kind of curious about that. I think there's more going on or not going on than, than meets the eye, but having said that, uh, we're committed. We need to get the extension. We do not need to lose, uh, what are we talking about, fifteen million?
Uh, almost ten million, ten point, uh, four five.
Ten point four five million, yeah. So, this is kind of a no-brainer, guys. Second.
So, hold on, hold on, gentlemen, hold on. All right, council, councilmember Allen has made the motion to approve. Councilman Clay seconded. Discussion, Councilman Carn?
Uh, yeah, obviously, we need to move forward with this thing. I guess my questions are, what exactly has been the holdup? I understand fabrication issues, I've heard that. Um, when we talked about this bridge and the project with C.W. Matthews, they talked about fabricating this at the fabricator in Texas. And my radar and bells immediately went off because the fabrication for the airport project and that it, it, fabrication in Texas was a disaster as well, and it wasn't done correctly. And I asked the question in that meeting, I wonder if this was the same fabricator outfit in Texas that did the, uh, we call it the two-hundred-million-dollar umbrella at the airport, you know, the, the big deals, which were fabricated incorrectly. They had to be, a lot of that had to be redone. It was another eighty million dollars plus on it. And I said to myself, I wonder if it was the same outfit that, that, that was doing this. I, I don't know if it was. But I'd also heard that some of our contractors are not getting paid. I heard that, that they, the... Is the fabrication the only reason for the delays, or are there other reasons?
The fabrication also involves welding, and the welding has to be inspected by GDOT. And this is very specific, uh, and therefore, it, it is time-consuming. And also, um, it is, they, there are only very few of these con type, type of contractors that work on these kind of bridges. So, after it is being approved, we'll have to ship it in here, and that will, you know, involve some time. And then, uh, possibly, we would not be able to do the, the installation because it might coincide with some of our holiday schedules. So, we, we want to make sure that we have sufficient contingencies. That's why we have requested this, uh, extension going up to the following year. Uh, I have here, if you want more questions to answer specific to this. Uh, the project manager for this project is here with me, who, uh, runs this with Prime Engineering.
Prime Engineering is here?
Yes.
No.
I don't see Prime here, but, um.
We have Caitlin.
Oh, there's Prime. Okay, yeah, well, come on down, let's get these questions answered so we can move forward. Um, yep, I'm assuming, uh, right, but you were Prime, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Sorry about the late hour.
Oh, no worries.
I'm assuming all bridges have to be inspected by GDOT for welding and the whole nine. Why wasn't this factored into C.W. Matthews' timeline?
It was, but what was discovered in early May and June was the actual manufacturing of the welds was taking longer to do. Um, they were having complications with such a specialty bridge where the, um, it's a arch bridge, box arch, the, the arches were starting to turn in on each other. And so, they had to put more bracing in between, and then the welding took longer. Now, to mitigate that, the, um, the manufacturer did add three crews, so they were working twenty-four hours a day. But then there's also the QA QC process. There's the QC process, which is the bridge manufacturer having to do their inspections. And then, once theirs done, then GDOT comes in with QA, and they have a third-party inspector to do it. And they all have to be on the same wavelength. And so, once all those reports are signed off, then GDOT will accept the arches. And it's just taking longer. A lot of the delays have been with the GDOT inspections and getting those done in a timely manner.
Okay, but, but obviously, if the welds were, i- if it was not incorrect, we wouldn't have to wait. That caused the delays, obviously.
There has been some welds that were not accepted and corrections made, and that goes with any kind of welding project. But it's just getting them done in a timely manner. Hasn't, the welding took longer than expected, which with this specialty project, as Dean mentioned, there was no bridge manufacturers in the state of Georgia that would accept this project because of the risk and liability with such a specialized structure.
Okay, so what, what's this I hear about contractors not getting paid since May?
We've been waiting on the pay applications from the city to be processed. And I think with Jackson's absence, with medical leave, and Dean coming on board, things just got lost in translation, and he wasn't aware that he's supposed to be processing the pay applications for C.W. Matthews.
Well, he wasn't here in May.
No, well.
Dean got here, what, a month ago?
July.
July, but the pay applications have been already processed as of yesterday, so it is in the mail right now.
All right, now that doesn't cause us to have any issues or?
Um, hold on a second, we've lost the quorum.
All right, uh, I guess maybe they're coming back, but if not, I guess we're done.
You're gonna lose one more from the quorum.
All right, so we're just gonna take a five-minute break. Moving on to, uh, city attorney's report?
Nothing, Mayor.
City manager's report?
Mayor, my, uh, regular report, um, was substituted with the budget report book and recommendations that was given earlier. I was asked to make some comment on, um, some of the issues that have arisen, I guess, related to, um, to the campaign. And over the last several days, um, I've received multiple complaints from numerous sources, internal and external. And as an organization, um, based on the nature of the complaints, and I will tell you particularly as they come from employees, that it requires us to, um, look into it, take it seriously. I have asked the city attorney for an opinion on some of the related issues. I know that's forthcoming. I've also asked Human Resources Department to begin to make inquiries, what I'm calling at least an informal investigation at this point, but I will tell you that there are multiple complaints. And it is very well possible that for your action on the budget, I think because of the sensitivity of the issues and, um, you know, we can't be premature. All that we've heard are allegations, but it may be my recommendation, I'm not saying that it will be at this point, but, uh, as we continue to look in the meantime, that it may be necessary to bring in, um, what I would call a neutral party, um, that could involve some, some funding. Um, so that's as much as I can report at this point, um, but we are taking it serious.
Thank you, sir. Uh, reported mayor and council. Councilmember Carn?
All right, it's late, we gotta get out of here. I, I would just recommend everyone, it's campaign season. Listen, let's campaign nice, let's try to respect each other. Um, let's keep in mind, the community is watching all of us. Uh, Congressman Lewis taught me about responsible leadership, and we have to just keep that in the back of our heads, so, uh, let's get through this. Elections are rough and tumble, but they don't need to go overboard, so I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Allen?
Uh, first of all, uh, city manager and department heads that are still here, thank you very much for, for staying. Appreciate it. Uh, it's been a long night, and I appreciate you all staying, and I appreciate the work they did on the, on the budget. Only thing I, a couple of things to mention, the trunk-or-treat. I know Officer P is not here, but he's gonna remind everybody, show up for trunk-or-treat on the twenty-seventh. And my wife made me wear pink because it's breast cancer month, so everybody, uh, supports breast cancer, so that's all I have.
Awareness, right?
Breast cancer.
It's early. I won't say it's late. Councilmember Gay?
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple comments, and I want to try and address some of the innuendos on the record. Uh, city manager, I hope those complaints that you're looking at, as my email said to you over the weekend, that it, uh, that you take all, all the complaints. I also want to address a couple of things, you know? You know, our city, our city has had what we call precedent. Since I've lived here, there's been a lot of precedent. We see a couple examples of that with the, uh, decision to give the the, uh, executive director of GICC permission to sign documents. But as you, what came out of that before you joined us was that there had been established precedent. This is, this is the eighth campaign that I'm aware of. And up to this campaign, there had always been a precedent. Even I remember, I don't remember his name, he died. He was Christopher, he was a, what is the acronym? Christopher Jones.
Jones.
Perfect example. One day, I was coming out my car about nineteen ninety, Christopher Jones ran out of the courtroom. "You can't do this, you can't do this, you can't bring a sign in here." I'm giving you an example. So, there's a lot of precedent. When, when my colleague ran, they was at the park. They were selling hot dogs and campaigning, and we had a precedent that we didn't do things on public space. We weren't taught the law, it was just a precedent. So, a lot of what you might be inheriting with your due role here is not just the budget, it's also culture. You're not just inheriting a budget, you're inheriting a culture. And you had better use your wit about you and refer closely with your legal team so that the integrity of your decisions are based in fact. Now, what am I meaning by this? You know, this is an election season. People don't want to lose their stakeholiness. People are threatened by change.
Councilman, someone has a mic, a phone by the mic, could you move it and send it back?
People, was somebody being recorded? We got a recorder.
No, I mean, your phone by the mic is getting beat bad.
Oh, we have a recorder. You can get it in real time to go to your Facebook. But my point is, this is an election season. And, and when there's an election season, you're gonna get all kind of crazy stuff. Like, first example, I don't mind sharing this with you. I don't, I'm not just a city councilman. The staff are not just workers. They're people that I know personally, I have relationship with, people I've established. We've lived together in the community. They don't just work here. So there was some male bonding going on with a worker who, we have a tradition, I'm gonna just let you know, help you out with your investigation. Just like my fraternity, when we see each other, there's certain things we do, there's certain handshakes, there's certain way we grab each other, certain way we do. Lot of people have different ways that they express themselves. So one of the old guys tried to try the old man and thought he could take me as he try, as he do every year. It's just a tradition and fun. I know when Erica, our mayor and councilwoman, was here, she says, "Council, y'all get up off that ground, stop. You done messed up your clothes." And that's about investigations and taking it serious. So then someone decided that they would take a picture of two men that are friends bonding within a second. And put a caption on it that I am, and I know as I was advised to just let it pile up, that I was beating up somebody because they removed my white signs and sent it to the news. And I guess you want a news story. You had better not let me get on the news. That's the worst mistake you can make. So I guess that's what this is. Me and one of my colleagues, he wanted to see if the old man still had it, and he went on to me, and then we, but he wasn't horseplaying. And when Dr. Baker started his investigation, he needed to start with himself for getting involved on social media supporting a candidate for mayor. He had better start with himself first. And you, your communication director asked you for some direction. Make the wrong mistake. Send out the wrong message. That's number one. Number two, let's talk about precedent for a minute. We worked months to put on a free event for our community, to bring our community together. Just so happened, it came on an election. It is no different than the communication director writing, we, we practically turned our videographer to a one candidate campaign person. The power of incompetence, the power of incumbents is, is unique. The power of incumbents is unique. You can use that power to be the death of the mayor. You could do senior summits. You could do all kind of things. You could sign cards like the governor did in giving the people to go to the gas station in casual during the election. You could sign stacks of bill. The power of incompetence, Miss Grabsen. You seem to be enjoying this. It's very unique. So where, where am I going with this? Pamela Stone and Gay, the first lady of Wardford, who has raised an amazing family, an amazing family in this ward, in this city. And I started a festival because my colleagues wouldn't vote for anything. We couldn't get enough, for Camp Truitt, we couldn't get no sidewalks. We couldn't get nothing. They says, "Look, don't get, don't vote for them." So we said, "Guess what? This job comes with some inherent powers." I give you the deposition now. This job comes with some inherent powers. So what did I decide to do? Okay, if you want to vote for a community center, if you want to lead an eighteen equals bearing for the all twenty-eight years you've been here, fine, but you can't stop me from loving all my constituents. You can't stop me from going to their funerals. You can't stop me from writing condolence to letters. You can't stop me from going to court with them. And as a result, I built a community of love. Yeah, we got, we got a, in my opinion, a group of systematically sick constituents. They were made that way. It's not their fault. But for the most part, we have a group of people that appreciate what we do. So the point is, we started a festival, and this body didn't give us no money. The first year I had to do open records requests with AJC. It just goes on and on and on and on. And the festival just continued to grow. So what are my point? No, we don't want to campaign. I don't even want to campaign at the festival. I want it to be non-political. We don't want to campaign. We want people, now, look. If I was at Stone Mountain, and I was with a group of concerned black clergy, a group of elected officials, Dr. Hawthorne, and the Klan was out there, which they often are out there, and us elected officials said, "Take them shirts off! You supremacists, take them shirts off!" Us elected officials are also exercising our First Amendment. See, the First Amendment work both ways. It don't just work when you got thinking you could complain on me. It works, we can use it too. If we don't pick you up and take you out, if we don't force an employee to take you out, we got just as much right to talk as you do. The First Amendment works both ways. More importantly, that's a Second Amendment. That's the right to bear arms. But we don't follow that amendment. But there are people who do. There are people who take people lies because they take this amendment thing way, way out of proportion. So my point is, we have a right to ask for the respect. And just because we ask, that's, that's no jurisprudence anywhere. We'll find fault in that. So that's what I'm gonna say about that. Yeah, we made a decision, we asked you respectfully. Don't pass out flyers, and more importantly, then you come to the coming home reunion, and you put up, you put up signs, tents, and I call you, and I call Kenny, and you do nothing. You don't do investigations. You don't take it serious. It's serious when you get an email from the mayor. Now all of a sudden, it's serious. It's serious. And then you come to the Sabrina Park, and you give people shoes and, and gratuities to register the vote, which is a borderline very serious. And that's that person who wrote, whoever he is, he basically resolved. I really didn't understand. Whoever that person who wrote that public, that public comment, Bob Vee, nobody could say it more eloquently. So my point is, when Dr. Baker starts investigating, start with itself. Investigate itself first. Secondly, talk with your lawyers. My understanding is nobody has contacted our city attorneys. Now let me get through this real quick. Signs. But before I do, before I do, you're not gonna come up on a celebrity with your cell phone, "I love you, Vivica." No, you're not. You're not invited. You're not invited. I'm so sorry. Write your letter, and that's it. You what? You're not invited. It's a secure area. You are not on the VIP list. You're not coming up to her car. That's what that was about. Secondly, and thirdly, from the pictures I see, the other candidates was having a good time. It was out there dancing with their shirts sewn, doing all this with, with his employee, smoking a cigarette, and had just took up two truckloads of Stone and Gay signs. But it's serious, Mayor. It was serious before you got here, sir. Now let me say this real quick. Under the previous mayor, we've never, ever, never, ever seen any type of influence on staff the way we have now. I, I don't get it. I don't know if it's because you got a nice little check, but, but city manager, let me say this to you. We've been told that you have given directions because the TV station did a article with the mayor's mother and the mayor's campaign manager, Cosi, and Walker, and they said, "It's look, it looks a disgrace. It's a disgrace. All these signs, it's a disgrace. It's don't look good, right?" And then it says, quote, Marcus, "Well, it's not against the ordinance. It just don't look good." So let me just get through this quickly. So I know that one particular campaign didn't buy signs, like you haven't bought a lot of signs. And then we go down Main Street, and y'all got signs everywhere. So I get called on the phone, "Then y'all better go get some signs." So you order signs, put them up where there weren't no signs. And then, because now this candidate got signs, because the candidate was running on their worth. They were running on their work. They was running on their years of service. They didn't think they had to buy signs for six dollars. And still don't. But to play the game, the candidate went and bought some signs. And then, then y'all come out there and say, "It don't look good." All the while, you ain't said nothing about the pure gas station, been sitting there like a eyesore since you dumped the half million dollars with that guy with that grant. You still got, keep colored part, beautiful sign, that Melissa who quit still folded over there on the corner. You ain't even touched that. You ain't said nothing about all the lottery and going on at Bobby's Metro every phone. But now all of a sudden, you're on TV because somebody can call eleven alive or whatever. And then, somebody succumbed to the pressure, and you give directions to pick up all these candidate signs, all of them. You done, you done cleared. But guess what you didn't do? You didn't clear the other side of Main Street where they had their signs. You took up a few of their signs because you knew you could take all of that person's signs. Ain't nobody called a lawyer. And then, you want to talk about serious? You want to talk about amendment? And then you go on private property and cut down signs. You cut down Karen Corbin's sign. You cut down Stone and Gay's sign. All private property that adhere to zoning code. And then, you got candidates that's taking signs and sticking them on private property, which OCGA says that's trespass. You'll go and ask a, a business, "Can we put a sign on your property?" Yes, you can. Then you go to, then you go to planning, "Does this sign adhere to the code?" Yes, it does. And then other candidates come around because they threaten, they can't fake for their own, and then they come and do what you do. It's almost like their game Sunday. You gotta be so good that you gotta be able to be followed and copied. And then you gotta do something miraculously that you catch the ball. It's like four-on-one, like Michael Jordan. And you still gotta be a champion. That's what this is. You gonna have undue influence. And so then you go back on Main Street this morning, the first day of early vote, and all the other candidate signs is right where you just took up the other candidate's sign. Really? Let me just say it again. You want to have a seat? I'm not quite finished. Then you go down Main Street, and you let all the other candidates put their sign down where you just took that one candidate's sign. When have you ever lived in a city where you go into a free event and all your signs in the back of a truck on Saturday? Man, you done cut down everybody's signs. Now, the last thing I want to say, I'm not gonna call no names, just like Obama didn't call Trump names. I'm not gonna call no names. But whoever this man, whatever rock he crawled up under, that's running for mayor, this city does not need a mayor whose only base is the worst of a person's ward. How is it that your base is the division people? The worst of your community, the worst in your family is your base. I don't understand this. I don't get it. Where did you come from? Who are you? And then I go on your website, and you say, "I'm from Atlanta. I live in Buckhead." But then you go over to poor people and say, "I'm Collie Park." Any other time, it's convenient to be from Buckhead and a proud woodwork parent. Now, I'm from Collie Park, and I love you. Yeah, you want this job. That's what you want. You want to come down here and extort this community, in my opinion. Where have, where is that group that come down here every night when it come to the budget? They don't care about no budget. We can spend all the money. They don't, obviously don't care about a budget. They don't care about Camp Truitt. They don't care about the Flint. They don't care about no street paving. All they care about is hate. Just be divisional. That's what we care about. We just want to come up here, and we want, we want to get, we, basically, what it seemed like they're running for is not service. Seemed like they're just trying to come up. That would have seemed like to me. I hope these vote, I don't know if you fast forward this with your mouth. I hope these voters are listening, because you gotta make some serious decisions. Just two other things. Pamela Stone and Gay advocated that the pure gas station, one of the remaining traditional pure gas stations be preserved. We asked this city, my colleagues, if they would fund it like they did tonight. No, we ain't funding it. Do you know, Mayor, do you know where the racetrack is on Camp Creek? Anybody know, talking about that bridge? Anybody know where the racetrack is on Camp Creek? Do you know that big office park next to the racetrack on Camp Creek? An African-American woman bought that building. She built it. And she had an upside with the bank, and she lost it. I was on council one year. I called my colleagues, said, "Look, man, this building can be purchased for 1.2 million dollars." Artie Jones, Tasha went there. They didn't know me, my colleagues, so they obviously came tearing, saying, "This could be City Hall West. They're building bigger than City Hall. 1.5 million dollars." It was for sale, it was a foreclosure. My colleagues didn't even return my phone call. Didn't even answer my email. That building worth seven million dollars. But you let a man come down here with the FAA and take tens, hundreds of thousand dollars since I've been on council. Could have got that building. So we need leadership. You need to wake up, and you need to vote. Could've got that building. So we need leadership. You need to wake up and you need to vote and fundamentally change this community. Last two things I say, the Jack Lungino Scholarship. That is a scholarship that was actually done for campaigning. He decided that if I do a Jack Lungino Scholarship, I'm gonna get sixty thousand dollars from Wally Park. Because Wally Park asked us to let them get a curb cut. So Wally Park, if anybody go to Wally Park, I'm gonna teach you all, I'm gonna give you all some history. My story. If you go to the, where Wally Park is, the reason why you can cross over into Wally Park was because G-Dot wanted a million dollars. And so, Wally Park family said, "Let's deed this to you and do it under the city name and it'll be less cheap." And he said, "Well, I want to do a Lungino Scholarship." So it had this big to do, just like we doing it. It was a big deal. Booklets, everything. Big dinner with the GICC. Nobody campaigned. They respected it. I'm almost finished. And then, and then, I mean, one year we built the playground during the campaign season, city manager. That's how Sabrina Park got built. Three months before the election, we built the playground. I put the guard rail. You know the guard rail that's there? That's, that's me caring about children. It took me three years to get that guard rail to make sure some car don't go over there and kill somebody. I put that guard rail there. But that was built for campaigning. That was a campaign move. So don't hate the festival. One night, we did a thing in here called Jack Speaks. Gave out trinkets. I saw, got pictures of you getting them. Campaign. Charge it to the game. That's what somebody told me today. Charge it to the game. So I follow you, young sir. I wouldn't waste a lot of my time. I keep, I continue on trying to move our city. That's what the voters care about. Don't care about this mess. Cause you can't come take picture with Vivica. If I ask you to take your shirt off, that's on you to take it off. You take it off, that's on you. You gotta take it off. That's on you. Maybe you took it off because you want to go back and start some mess. And whoever took that picture, a man raped and sent it to the news, that's slanderous. That's very, very ugly. That's wrong. Last thing I'll say is, target. The target is an eyesore. It is a eyesore. There's homeless people back there. There's material that's been sit, because I understand the feds interviewed them because it was torn down without hazmat. Now the stuff is laying around there. It don't have a fence. There's no development. We need to do something about target. That's all I got. As Mayor, excuse me, unfortunately, I won't be able to hear your minutes because I just get paid. So y'all have a good night.
Well, it looks like we've lost a quorum, but I haven't lost the mic. So, um, want to congratulate Mercedes Miller and her team on an amazing preseason. Yep, our, our meeting's over at 1:12, but I still get to talk. So, um, want to congratulate Mercedes Miller and her team on a fantastic preseason game for the Hawks. Um, it was wonderful to have the opportunity to see real live NBA action in our arena. Uh, and the Hawks were victorious over the Pelicans and I got the opportunity to see some great players from my alma mater, so that's always really exciting. Um, want to congratulate Providence Baptist Church on an amazing fall festival. They worked really, really hard on the entire event and I know that there were a number of departments from the city that assisted fire, police, I mean, everyone, you know, Sergeant Garrett is there all the time at Providence and was there as well. He's right in the back of, of our room, hanging in there, uh, this morning. Um, so thank you for everything that you do and just wanted to congratulate them on a great event and a wonderful family, family affair. Um, I know that the Recreation and Cultural Arts movie nights have been rained out, but we've got one coming up on the eighteenth at Willis Park. And I can't quite recall which movie it is, but it's part of the Halloween movie series. So get out and support, and if the weather is something like what we have been experiencing the last forty-eight hours or so, bring a blanket. Uh, and, and cozy up and have a good time there. Uh, last week, we had our District Three meeting for the Georgia Municipal Association. So that is basically all of the metro Atlanta cities. We had a great turnout at the Georgia Municipal Association headquarters. And it was a, a chance for us to gather and learn about some of the things that are going to be on the horizon for the upcoming legislative session. We anticipate that we are going to see some, some things around tort reform. Uh, the governor has been very vocal about that aspect of things and that can have some implications for cities. Um, also, we anticipate that we will see some movement on housing. Um, in this off-session, uh, GMA has been meeting with ACCG and convened a housing task force with a number of folks around the state, including home builders, Habitat for Humanity, talking about how we address some of these issues of housing affordability, the lack of housing. Um, every community is dealing with a housing crisis. It looks different in various communities. It, we've got five hundred thirty-seven cities in Georgia and a hundred and fifty-nine counties. So, the problem looks different, but everyone is facing challenges. So, the, the goal of this task force has been to try to find some broad-based solutions that allow us to use the tools across the state to address the specific needs that we have in our, in our particular communities. So, it was a really, really informative session and look forward to all the good work that the Georgia Municipal Association is continuing to do. And also wanted to congratulate Bobby Wilson for a fantastic event at the Metro Atlanta Urban Farm last week. He had folks from across the country coming in for a symposium about, uh, learning about urban farming. And they all came to see what we had going on here in College Park. The actual conference was happening in Atlanta downtown, but they bussed everyone here so they could see all the great work that is happening from our very own CNN hero. So, it has been an eventful, fun last couple of weeks. Um, right now, early voting did start, so please get out and make sure that you are exercising your right to vote. It is, uh, early voting is available at the College Park Library and the College Park Fire Station, um, in Clayton County, uh, through November third, and then Election Day is November seventh. No matter who you select, it is important that you get out and you exercise that right to vote. We've got important things on that ballot, including a homestead exemption for our low-income seniors and disabled folks. And so, we want to make sure that you get an opportunity to weigh in on that and keep on building that community we deserve. So, with that, we did not have executive session tonight, so we do not have any executive session minutes. And we couldn't approve them anyway because we don't have a quorum. So, we are really signing off at 1:16.